All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the City Council of Atascadero and ask Councilmember Borbo to please lead us in a pledge to the flag.
And you're able to join me in submitting our nations. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Derris.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Protim Newsom, I see that she is here as a call-in, so we'll just get her connected and then Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
Here.
There she is. All right. Well, welcome, everyone. If you are here, here in person, amazing. Good to see your faces. And I, if you were watching on YouTube, you are on Channel 20 or on any of the other means by which you can watch this, I want to let you know for public comment, the way that you can call in is to dial the following number. This is calling into Zoom. It is six, six, nine, nine hundred, six, eight, three, three. I'm going to say that one more time. It's six, six, nine, nine hundred, six, eight, three, three. And then you'll need to use a meeting ID, which is eight, eight, nine, two, three, four, seven, nine, zero, one, eight. Let me give that to you again. It's eight, eight, nine, two, three, four, seven, nine, zero, one, eight. And then, of course, if you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, that information is right there. When you do call in, please let us know what item you were wishing to speak on, and we will get you connected at the right time. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Derris, and we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda. And the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yeah.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I will now ask our city attorney, Mr. Pyrick, to report out on any, anything from our closed session on June 14th.
There is no reportable action.
Thank you. We have no presentations, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar is considered to be consisted of routine items that are non-controversial in nature and can be approved in one motion unless there's a member of the council or the public wishing to pull an item. So I will look to my council members or any council member wishing to pull an item. Comment? Seeing, hearing none. I will look here publicly. If anyone wishes to, please raise your hand and come forward. If you're on the webinar, you can go ahead and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, star nine. Look at all these ways to participate. Pretty cool. All right. I'm not seeing anybody wishing to pull an item. Oh, please come to the podium, as if this is on the consent calendar. Oh, no, this is under Consent Calendar A. So either the minutes or the accounts payable. Yeah, okay, wonderful. So I will go ahead and ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
Don't move.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Derris, second by Councilmember Borbo. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yeah.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to updates from the city manager, and I believe this will be given by what be Spanish or Ms. Christensen? All right. Laura, take it away.
Thank you so much, counsel. Just want to report on Tuesday evenings in the park. Those will continue through the summer. They're presented by the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. They occur every Tuesday throughout the summer from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Atascadero Lake Park. You can enjoy a tasty dinner provided by great local food trucks, along with beverages from the wine and beer garden. Every week, there will be live music by the Atascadero Community Band, which starts at 7:00 p.m. And Tuesday in the Park supports local nonprofit groups like the Kiwanis Club, the Atascadero Memorial Foundation, the Atascadero Prendery Foundation, and so many more. Tuesdays in the Park will go through August 2nd. Farmer's Market, the Summer Sizzle Series 2022, is getting ready to kick off tomorrow. So that'll kick off tomorrow, Wednesday, June 29th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. here at the Sunken Gardens. It's being presented by the North County Farmer's Market. It tomorrow will be the first of a four summer sizzle events that will go through the summer through August 3rd, except for during the California Midstate Fair. Each event will include live music, a featured local chef who will provide tasty food samples along with a complimentary recipe, which includes ingredients that can be purchased right at the farmer's market. There will also be cider and wine tasting available for purchase from Bristol Cider House and Lone Madron Winery. Tomorrow afternoon, everyone can enjoy the event with great musical entertainment by Burning Jinx. We especially want to thank our terrific local chefs, musicians, and beverage vendors for participating in our annual Farmer's Market Summer Sizzle Event. Series event, sorry.
Kind of a tongue twister.
That is. I also just want to mention that on Wednesdays during the fair time, we won't have the special summer sizzle event during the regular farmer's market, but farmer's market still, will still occur from 3:00 to 6:00 in the Sunken Gardens. Saturdays in the Park, the Summer Concert Series, that actually is going to begin this Saturday, July 2nd, at 6:30 p.m. Concerts will be held almost every Saturday evening throughout the summer. Our first concert of the summer will have music provided by the Rockin' Bees Band and is presented by the Stovens Spa Center. The Rockin' Bees Band has a diverse repertoire that is great for listening and dancing. Music lovers of all ages will enjoy the wide range of styles, quality musi- musicianship, there's another tongue twister, and good vibes that they'll bring to the stage. Paradise shaved ice and watu coal tacos. We'll be selling their delicious concert fare. They just wanted to really give me tongue twisters today. All of our concerts will be held at the Atascadero Lake Park Bandstand on Saturdays from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. They're free to attend, and everyone should be sure to bring a blanket or a low-back chair and the entire family. Our Summer Concert Series is made possible by our fantastic sponsors, which include presenting sponsors Grigor and Alice Jones, Perry's Parcels and Gift, Remax Success, Waste Management, Golden One Credit Union, and Stovens Spa Center. Special thanks to all of our sponsors for their support. Fourth of July Celebration and Music Festival at Atascadero Lake is back. Just as a reminder, no fireworks are permitted within the Atascadero city limits, so this event will, and that includes, sorry, that does include safe and sane fireworks, so no fireworks in Atascadero. The Fourth of July event in Atascadero will be a music festival and celebration, and it's returning to Atascadero Lake for its fifth year. The event will be held on Monday, July 4th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be at Atascadero Lake Park and will be over by the bandstand. Everyone should plan to celebrate Independence Day under the giant shady oaks at the lake while enjoying three great musical acts, along with great food, drinks, vendors, family-friendly amusement, and the playground. The zoo will also be open on the 4th for its regular hours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The music festival will include many varieties of Americana music, which everyone will be sure to enjoy. The event kicks off at 4:00 p.m. with the Chris Keith Band, followed by Britannia and Silva, and then ending with Bremen Town. General admission to attend the Fourth of July Celebration at the lake park is free, so another great free event in town. If you want to be closer to the music, there is a reserved VIP for $10 per person and front row seats available for $20 each. Tickets are available for the VIP or the front row online at Atascadero, Fourth of July, with fourth spelled out dot org. So again, atascadero, fourthofjuly.org. This Fourth of July Music Festival is a fun, family-friendly, and safe way to celebrate the Fourth of July. Get sure to have everyone dancing under a beautiful Atascadero summer evening sky. It's an annual fundraiser that benefits the Atascadero Colony Days, and for more information, again, please visit www.atascaderofourthofjuly.org. And for more information about any of our city events, you can always go to www dot visitatascadero dot com. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Does council have any questions?
I didn't. Laura, you had sent us an email, and I think there was some press releases regarding the status of the movie theater changing ownership. If I recall correctly, is that slated to reopen this week?
Yeah, the press release did say that it would open later this week, so a change of hands either on the 30th or the 1st.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to community forum. Now, community forum is reserved for persons who would like to speak to the council over which something we have jurisdiction, but that is not on our agenda tonight. And so if you would like to do that, kind of go ahead and move your way over to the podium. If you're on the webinar, you can raise your hand. If you're on the phone, star nine. And we will limit the total amount for community forum to 30 minutes. When you do speak, please state your name, and we have the timer going just for your, so you can kind of keep track of where you are. All right. And with that, welcome to our first speaker here in the.
Madam Mayor, city council members, city officials.
If you could, I know you're quite tall. If you could pull that up a little closer to you, Mr. Rimkus.
Is this better?
Much better.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had nothing to do with my height. Madam Mayor, city council members, city officials, my name is Frank Rimkus. I'm the CEO of Galaxy Theaters headquartered in Los Angeles. I came up here today for really one reason, and that is to address all of you and say thank you. It's bittersweet that we're leaving. We're not leaving because of our decisions, but others, other decisions. But I would say, reflecting in a positive note, we've had 11 years of just a wonderful experience here in Atascadero with people. We've made a lot of friends. We've got a lot of stories. We've gotten a lot of support. And I want you to know, we, we really appreciated the love and the support for that theater over the years. We're, we're leaving sad, but I would like to just leave you with a little bit of perspective, or little few data points about your theater, because it is your and that is, it started about 12 ago, 12 years ago, and I'll be brief. It started with a phone call from Jim Harrison, who was the owner of the land at the time.
If you could keep it focused towards us, because that keeps you on the microphone. Thank you.
Not used to the media. I served with Jim Harrison. He called and said, you know, we're looking for a theater in Atascadero. Would you be interested? And I said, yes, we would be. I'm familiar with the area. Met, I came up, met with Tom O'Malley, your mayor at the time, and Jim Lewis, who was your assistant city manager at the time. And I was impressed with their energy, their positivity, their attitude, their resourcefulness, and also to, he talked about the fact that they've been a longtime dream or goal for the city to have its very own first-class movie theater. And so we formed, if you will, kind of a non-contractual joint venture. And what I mean by that is the city, you, the city, did a heroic job of convincing the lenders that this was a great place to have a theater and that the, the city, the city was behind it. The city is energized and would support it, and indeed you did. That got to funding. We built the theater, designed it to reflect really the architectural style, what we think of the city downtown here, downtown area, and we built a first-class movie theater. And we opened it on March 11, 2011. And since that time, it has grown. I'm pleased to say we have taught a lot of young people working, working on our working staff members in the theater. We've probably been the single biggest source employer of teaching young people how to clean up their bedrooms. But seriously, when we started.
You, you are at three minutes, and as much as I would love to hear a ton, could you wrap up in, say, 15 seconds?
Sure, yeah. What I, what I'd wrap up by saying is today, you are a landmark. You have brand recognition. You have city recognition. There's over almost 3 million people that have come through our doors downtown over the last 11 years. And when you ask anybody, whether it be San Miguel or Santa Maria, you know Galaxy Atascadero, they know exactly where it is. So you have a lot to be proud of. One more thing is you have a theater that is still in good condition, is usable, and it has achieved, I think, what hopefully you wanted, and that was a first-class movie theater. So thank you very much. We appreciated the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Rimkus. Next speaker. And if anyone else is wishing to speak here at community forum, start making your way over there so we keep things moving.
Jeff Osland, business owner here in the city and resident, and before the gentleman from Galaxy leads, because this is one of the three points I wanted to bring up tonight. We had a movie theater that the city supported, which was great. But we have a, a brand leaving the city, and a lot of our residents are concerned that we have gift cards. We helped support this theater during COVID, buying gift cards and popcorn to help keep them open. And we'd like to know how we redeem them back, and I think it's a responsibility of our chamber congress, our city leaders, and the Galaxy Theater to explain this to our residents that have purchased these gift cards, because I don't think going to Carson City or LA is fair to us that live here. Secondly, yes, I do know the Galaxy Theater's brand, and it's a great movie. I will say that. Great theater, and that's awesome. Secondly, there's been a couple incidences in this town. One, we had a fire on Saturday. I'm not going to name the resident that had a fire. But about a year, year and a half ago, the city passed an ordinance about cleaning stuff up. This is the third fire at this person's residence. Luckily, our fire department got it out. It's all over YouTube. It's all over Facebook of a train going up. And we know this individual, the stockpiles a lot of stuff at his house. I'd like to know if we're going to code enforcement. There's neighbors that are very concerned about it, so I have that one. On a positive note, your police department has hooked, this is negative but positive, 35 DUIs in the last 48 hours. One of them was in front of my shop at a motorcycle going down El Camino Real at 6:00 in the morning at 80 miles an hour. And the person was definitely on some type of substance. Thankfully, we get past D-20. Thankfully, we are getting more officers on the street to keep our streets safe and our residents safe. And we're getting these people off the street, so we don't have accidents where people die. So that's a direct from D-20. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Let's see, let me go to the webinar. I'm not seeing anyone here in, I was going to say in studio. Here in the chambers. Let's see, anyone on the webinar wishing to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. I am not seeing anyone, anyone on the phone. Anyone on the phone, Luke? I, I, I actually, I don't, well, hold on a second. So I don't want this to become like a question and answer period during community forum, so I would prefer that we if, if, hold on for a second, if we could. So are you wanting to speak at community forum, the general, or are you speaking, I'm not speaking to the young women here in general, yeah, so please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Sierra Steele. I just wanted to take this moment. I was initially brought here by another item on the agenda, which is what pulled me out of my home. But I wanted to spend this time to introduce myself and bring awareness to a few issues that I have uncovered within the city just as far as accessibility of information goes. I did, in fact, make a PowerPoint presentation and some other items addressing this with ADA compliance and other things. However, that will have to wait for another meeting other than tonight due to my time constraints with other priorities for the meeting for this evening. Again, my name's Sierra Steele. I'm a property owner here in Atascadero. I grew up here. I'm the eldest granddaughter of Danish immigrants. I left when I was 17, answered my call to serve my duty in the United States Air Force, and during that time, I was engaged in 9/11, OEF, OIF. After that, I remained as a government contractor and worked in government, and when I became pregnant, I felt a calling to come back home to Atascadero to raise my family, to plant roots, and invested in this city, and I was pulled here and planned to protect my investment, and I appreciate everyone's time and consideration and listening to the information that is not being presented and shown by the other community members for whatever reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public wishing to speak and public comment? Right, I'm not seeing any. Mr. Rimkus, did he, did he remain, or did he, okay. So we'll go ahead and close community forum and bring that back to council and staff. So yeah, with regards to that, that's something that, you know, the, the city has no jurisdiction over gift cards and, you know, of any business. So that's something that does need to be, you know, discussed with the business, if that's a concern, whether the chamber gets involved or not, but that's not something that the city can, can do anything about. I can certainly understand the frustration. But any business, you know, when Kmart left, if anyone had Kmart gift cards, there's nothing the city could do about that. You'd have to go to a Kmart elsewhere, whatever business it might be. So while I, I, I understand that, and I know it's very unfortunate, and if you're in possession of those gift cards, not very pleased about it, but I would reach out to Galaxy and see if there is, if they have a solution for that. And I will ask our, I will ask Ms. Christensen with regards to the the three fires and code enforcement. We don't typically speak to individual code enforcement issues, but I can, if you can speak to just that that is being taken care of by staff.
I do know that our fire department was working on that, and so they, if, I, I don't know to speak directly to any open code enforcement. So I can double check, and Jeff, if you have some additional questions, go ahead and call me to figure that out with what we do or don't have active in the, because we can't speak to code enforcement cases.
Thank you. All right. So since we did not take the full 30 minutes for community forum, community forum will stay open until 6:41, and so if anybody is wishing to speak at community forum, and it's not quite 6:41 yet, let us know, and we will bring you on at the earliest opportunity, which will be after whatever item it is that we're, happen to be working on. So if you raise your hand or just maybe let the city clerk know that you're wanting to speak on an item, but that would be by 6:41. Now we will move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing adopting sewer service charges to be added to the 2023, 20, 2022, 2023 property tax rolls. And I will turn this over to our Public Works analyst, Ryan Betts.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Ryan Betts. I'm the Public Works analyst. We're here before you tonight to discuss the adoption of sewer, sewer service charges to be added to the 2022, 2023 property tax rolls. Besides the discussion on the public hearing, just by way of background, the sewer service charges are fixed rates, and they're collected with property taxes. It should be noted that this has been generally the print practice since, I believe, 1984 under the Atascadero County Sanitation District. So this has certainly been the process this entire time. It typically involves billing approximately 5,400 parcels for a new total of estimated of $3.9 million. It's important to note for the audience and the public that the sewer service charge appears on the property tax roll as a task sewer charge. This file, if you will, is due to the county auditor on July 15, 2022. And then, of course, the county adds a $2 fee to each levy. The table before you is the identical table that was mailed out earlier this spring as we headed to the city council to discuss an opportunity to potentially increase the sewer service charge for 2022, 2023. The city council passed that as part of their Proposition 218 process back in May 10, 2022. For the most part, these rates are going up approximately 18 to 19%. These are for, they're certainly necessary for that infrastructure and some of the sewer service costs to actually service the wastewater from home and commercial to the treatment plant. Primarily, this, the single family is what a lot of folks are interested in. That's going from, I believe, $34 per EBU to $40 and 46 cents. Just by will of comparing ourselves to some of our neighboring cities and CSDs, as you can see, if we remained as is, our test girl current rate is that bottom kind of bluish purple. With the proposed rates, we are still certainly at the lower half of our comparable cities. Most notably, a lot of these cities and CSDs also raised their rates due to the infrastructure and costs for service around this time in the county. So the recommendations before you tonight is conduct a public hearing to receive verbal testimony regarding the proposed sewer service charges to be levied onto the property tax rolls, and number two, adopt a draft resolution approving sewer service charges to be added to the 22, 2023 property tax rolls. And with that, I'll answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. And if you've been listening for some time to our meetings, you know that this is a, this, this comes before us several times in this process, so we've talked about this quite a lot. I will look to council to see if we have any questions for staff. Not seeing any. I will go ahead and open up to public comment. If there's anyone wishing to comment on this item, go ahead and come to the podium. If you're in the webinar, you can press star, I'm sorry, you can raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, star nine. I am not seeing anyone. Luke, anyone on the phone? No, all right. And with that, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
I'm moving to adopt the draft resolution approving sewer service charges, as indicated.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Borbo, second by Councilmember Derris. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Derris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes. Thank you. We're on to now the Del Rio Marketplace, and I, this will be Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Actually, our senior planner, Kelly Gleason, is going to be presenting this to you tonight, and I'll be here to answer your questions and provide some guidance as well.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I think we're just pulling that presentation up. Thank you, Luke. So we're here tonight to talk about the Del Rio Marketplace project. So the project's located at approximately the intersection of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real. It does extend north just short of the Colony Homes Development and extends east just short of Abyspo Road. There is a portion of the development project that is outside of the specific plan area. We do have seen some amendments to the Del Rio Road specific plan come forward in the last year or two. And this parcel comprises a majority of the northeast project site, and then there's an additional parcel that's also proposed to be part of the development. So here's a zoning map of the proposed area. You can see that the project site with the star on it is zoned, general, general plan designation, general commercial, and the zoning is commercial retail. As mentioned before, a large portion of the site does have the specific plan number two overlay zone on it. The entirety of the site is just over 11 acres. It's comprised of six parcels in total currently. You can see that the commercial zoning is surrounded by our small lot, single-family zone, which is residential, single-family X. And then across the street on El Camino, there are commercial retail, commercial tourist, and commercial park parcels. This is, gives us a little better view of the context of the project. We've tried to overlay it as best we can. We've tried to overlay it as best we can. So this is the proposed development and the surrounding parcels. There are a number of residential lots that are currently under construction behind the proposed project. If you've driven by, you've probably seen them going up in the past few months. There's an existing residential neighborhood off South Mirasol Way as well that was built quite a few years ago. And then there's the Del Rio Ranch Project, which is across Del Rio Road, known as the southeast project site in the Del Rio Road specific plan. There is some construction going on for a new Taco Bell and some retail pads on the corner of Del Rio Road and El Camino adjacent to the freeway. The pit stop gas station is also approved and in for building permits and will likely be issued by the end of the year. There's the Home to Suites Hotel Project that was constructed in the last couple of years as well across El Camino. The neighboring parcels to the north, there's an access flag that goes to a parcel in the rear that just has one single family house on it. And then there's the Colony Homes Development to the north of that. So the current application is for a master plan of development for the site, which would establish building pad locations, driveway locations, and site circulation. It does incorporate shared access and parking, which is a requirement of the Del Rio Road specific plan. And this master plan of development is coming before you tonight. It would normally just be a planning commission level approval, but the Del Rio specific plan did require that these applications come before Council for approval. There is a grocery store, which is currently proposed as the center anchor. So the grocery store is about 32,000 square feet. There's an additional approximately 32,000 square feet of surrounding retail and commercial uses, about 19,000 square feet of some light industrial artisan type spaces that could, that are proposed as part of the development, and about 32,000 square feet of ground floor office space with options for second and third floor office or residential units. They are proposing up to 92 units. Those buildings haven't been designed to date, but that is what they believe they could fit on, on those buildings based on unit size. So a little bit of background, the specific plan was originally approved in 2012. It did include a Walmart development and a larger scale retail commercial center on this site. The specific plan was amended in 2020. We expanded some uses with a focus on retail, light industrial tourist serving uses, and some job centric uses. We did eliminate some high traffic generating uses so that we could have some minimized improvements to the interchange and focus on traffic and circulation flow. Since that time, the site was marketed to business parks and grocery tenants, and they did secure a grocery tenant for the site. This was the originally approved master plan of development that was approved in 2012 with the Walmart project. You can see there's some larger scale retail along the eastern portion of the site with some small retail scattered along the frontage of El Camino Real. The entry points are roughly similar locations to where they're proposed today. There was a requirement in the 2012 specific plan that the project connect via a parking lot to the project sites to the north, which today is part of the proposed project. You can see kind of the dash lines and then approximate location of that more northern site. So the planning commission did review the project and they did recommend approval with some modified conditions. There was some rewording to one of the conditions to clarify the height of the first floor for the multi-story buildings. And they did recommend the free tanning tenant sign as proposed at 20 feet. There was an original staff condition to lower that sign a little bit. The applicants have provided some additional information about that sign and planning commission did recommend that that get approved at the full 20 feet. Staff also added some conditions since planning commission's approval for some clarification. The specific plan does make mention to the Community Facilities District for residential uses. We wanted to clarify that as a condition of approval on this project. So we did add that as condition number 11 in your resolution, as well as condition number 33 specifying some particular types of landscaping around the project edges to ensure that there's not unintended pedestrian connections where those are not planned. So this is the current proposed master plan of development. There is the grocery tenant sort of in the center location. The applicant and staff did work together to come up with a design that activated the El Camino Real frontage and the corner while ensuring that there was enough sightlines into the project and space for tenant parking and tenant needs for the grocery store. So they, the applicants did come up with this angled design, which has pedestrian connection from the corner of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real, and then has a number of buildings surrounding the anchor tenant site. So on the northern portion of the project, there are office uses, light industrial artisan type spaces proposed, as well as residential uses above those buildings. And the office, three building or two building in the corner is also proposed as a multi-story building that would have office and potential residential uses on the second and third floor. And then there are some retail uses along the El Camino and Del Rio frontage. The applicants tried to incorporate a lot of pedestrian features for the project, including, including a lot of plaza spaces. The angular design allowed them to have some areas that were a little bit more unique in shape and they were able to use those as some plaza spaces to both be available to the adjacent retail spaces as well as the residential and office uses. And the grocery store will also have sort of a barbecue lunch component that will use one of the larger plaza spaces. As I mentioned before, there is a flag lot, which is kind of a unique situation to the northern portion of the property that contains a driveway that goes all the way back to a single family house in the rear. And then we hit our sort of normal development pattern for that zone with small lot, single family. In terms of setbacks on the site, it's a little bit unique because part of the site is inside the specific plan and part of the site is outside. So the specific plan does have certain setback requirements. I think they have a 30-foot setback requirement to the rear residential properties. They are providing a 45-foot setback. And then on the northern property, which is just under our commercial retail zoning, we do not have side setback requirements for commercial. However, the applicants are providing a 22-foot setback in that location at the minimum. The office building along the northern property line is setback at approximately 80 feet. In terms of circulation, there are three main driveways as part of the project site. The main entry driveway is off of El Camino Real. It does have that median in between it. And then it is restricted to right in, right out only to avoid traffic conflicts at the intersection and some of the uses across the street. So the main egress driveway will likely be either the Del Rio Road driveway or the more northern driveway on El Camino. That is aligned with the hotel driveway so that we ensure that those left-hand turning movements can happen freely and there will be as little conflict as possible to ensure that people can turn left out of the site at that location. There is a pull-through delivery area for the grocery store located towards the rear of the site. And I think we have a truck turning diagram in a couple slides so you can see how that will function. And here it is. So this is the intended delivery truck path for the larger grocery store delivery trucks. So they would be entering the site at the northernmost driveway, continuing to the back of the store where there's more of a pull through, pull through delivery environment at the back of the store. And then out the Del Rio driveway where they have free access onto the freeway or returning onto El Camino Real if they have other deliveries to make. The project is also proposing some different kinds of fencing between, around their project site, between the different uses. So within the specific plan, the mitigation measure requires a sound wall along the eastern property line where there was proposed to be some anchor store tenants and some regional retail that would have a lot of delivery uses. So the applicant is proposing to maintain that sound wall along most of the eastern portion of the site. They are requesting that there be a fence in that residential drainage basin location. So because of the new angled design of the site and the fact that there is a large landscape buffer that is a residential drainage basin for the project to the east, they believe that a fence will be adequate in that location for sound. And then the northern parcel outside the specific plan, they are proposing a solid fence barrier. There is a condition in the resolution that requires an acoustical analysis to ensure that sound walls are included in every location where they would be deemed necessary based on some of the noise criteria in our general plan and in our municipal code. So they do have to do that prior to any building permit so that we know exactly where those locations need to be. In terms of architecture, they're proposing architecture that is consistent with the Del Rio specific plan. It's a contemporary agrarian architectural theme. So there are simple forms and very specific materials. Wood look siding being one of those, board and batten elements along with metal roofing, black storefront window systems, so we get that contrasting grid and some metal awnings. Also, part of the buildings would be sort of agrarian light fixtures and maybe some rock or stone on the base elements or exposed concrete. So the grocery anchor is the most detailed design currently of the proposed project. That is what they are proposing to build for phase one. The remaining buildings are conceptual in nature. We do have sort of some height and massing studies as well as some conceptual elevations. And they are conditioned to be consistent with the architectural materials of the grocery tenant. In terms of parking, there are 540 spaces that we anticipate being required. The, they are providing 580 spaces, which will provide a little bit of flexibility in site design and unit count and depending on uses for those sort of light industrial or retail areas. The site is also designed with some semi-separated parking areas from the main sort of grocery store tenant parking area. And this was done intentionally to provide a little bit more private parking opportunities for both the office tenant uses and the potential residential uses as well. There's also parking at the exchange buildings that are designed to be flexible to allow for some roll-up doors. So those spaces would be dedicated to particular tenants and then those spaces could be used as drive-through spaces to get into the building should there be a tenant with that need. So per the specific plan, the maximum signage is one foot per linear foot of tenant frontage. We do have signage designed for the Valley Fresh Market. It is within the size limitations of the specific plan. There's also some center identification signage proposed at the Del Rio, El Camino intersection on kind of a pedestrian pergola type feature. And the future tenant size signage will have to comply with the specific plan in terms of size and location. There are also two multi-tenant monument signs that are proposed, both at the, the southern main entry driveway of the development and at the Del Rio driveway. This sign is proposed to be 20 feet in height. It does include a decorative roof feature that's included in that 20 feet, as well as a decorative stone base. The applicants provided some additional images at the top that you can see to just sort of give a sense of scale of that 20 feet to show that it is in proportion with the buildings that are on site. So the applicant is proposing a mixed-use development, which would be approved as part of the use permit if the council so chooses tonight. Being in the commercial retail zone, we do allow up to 24 units per acre within that zoning designation for mixed-use developments. So the base density of the site is actually 266 units if we take into account the whole 11 acres. Obviously, residential above a grocery store doesn't always work in a couple of the retail spaces. So the applicants are proposing a maximum of 92 potential units on the exchange buildings and the office buildings as a compatible portion of their retail development plan. They've also included a tentative parcel map, which would be approved as part of the project tonight. So the site is currently six parcels and the map would create seven parcels that would divide the site based on the building location into, you know, more leasable space. And that would provide shared parking and access easements over the entirety of the site to ensure that all of those improvements remain maintained and in nice order and consistent. So the project as designed is consistent with all the standards of the specific plan for the, for the parcels that are within the specific plan. The parcel outside the specific plan still remains consistent with a lot of the requirements of the specific plan, including architectural theme and all of those parking and access connections. It is consistent in terms of the uses that they're proposing, the landscape design and the sound wall requirement as conditioned. So traffic was one of the main focuses of our 2020 update to the specific plan. And so we wanted to make sure that the project was consistent with all of those requirements and that analysis. So the applicants did prepare an updated traffic analysis, including mitigation measures to determine consistency with the 2020 amendment. What happened with this is that the project engineer determined that additional lanes would be helpful on Del Rio Road. So the 2020 analysis left the lane configuration for eastbound and westbound roughly the same as it is today. The traffic engineer and this new analysis included additional lanes, which would allow a dedicated left turn lane in both the eastbound and westbound directions, which added some extra capacity to that intersection, allowing for delayed improvements for the dedicated right turn lane onto the freeway. That added capacity, with that added capacity, we added a condition that in Luffy be paid towards those improvements so that those improvements could be done at a future date when the traffic reached levels that would require that improvement. And we did condition the project in such a way that the traffic numbers and count and capacity be analyzed with each building permit to ensure that we don't get a situation where somebody is entitled but not building and it keeps other projects in the area from moving forward. So conditioning it to tie into building permit issuance allows all projects in the area to move forward until capacity is reached. So this is a diagram because there were a lot of words about lanes. The diagram about the proposed improvements. Part of this was done by the applicant through their mitigation measure, but part of this was the city's consultant in dealing with all of the interchange improvements. So, so we can see dedicated left-hand turn lanes on the eastbound and westbound approaches onto El Camino Real. And that allows the through traffic to be in a separate lane and the left-hand turn movements to be separate. So it allows for some additional, different signal timing that allows for more efficient traffic flow. And then what's a little bit different on this diagram is that there will be a dedicated right-hand turn lane onto El Camino Real going southbound as well. So after the DRC meeting and the planning commission meeting, neighbors, neighbors reached out to us with some concerns. We have had multiple phone calls as well as some site meetings with some of the neighbors to understand their concerns. I think we detailed some of those in your staff report for review. One of the major concerns is noise from the project, not only from project operation, but from construction as well. So as noted, the specific plan does require some sound walls on the eastern portion of the project. That's where the original project had loading docks and things that would have a significant noise impact towards residential uses. The new project incorporates residential and office uses, uses, which are generally less of a noise impact and has focused those against the residential areas. We also have a condition added for the acoustical analysis to determine when those sound walls are absolutely necessary. In terms of our standard municipal code requirements, our municipal code does require a solid barrier between residential and commercial uses. However, it does not specify a material for that barrier. So the applicant is currently proposing wood fencing for a portion of their project site. There is some possibility that some of the exchange building uses may generate noise, depending on what tenants go in there. The light industrial uses that are envisioned are more artisan type uses. Maybe somebody with a small coffee roastery and coffee shop or jewelry maker or things of that nature that aren't typically associated with noise, but could contain some level of delivery associated with them. Probably, you know, not a semi-truck like for grocery stores, but might have some delivery level associated with them. And then construction noise is also a concern in our municipal code. We do have hours of operation listed between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM as allowed to have heightened noise as well as for construction. The council could choose to limit construction noise. The council could choose to limit construction noise, especially in the evening hours, to some additional hours and maybe not have construction on the weekends if that continued to be a concern. That's what I just went over. So safety was also a concern, so there's a concern about the interface between the commercial and single-family residential uses. There are single-family residential uses bordering the entire site, both on the eastern edges and the northern edges. In some ways, adding residential to the site will create a 24-hour presence on the site, which means, you know, eyes will be on the site 24 hours a day. And that may lessen some safety concerns in terms of, you know, what people might be doing on the site that might not be, you know, there for a particular purpose. There has also been some thought to the fencing design adjacent to the residential serving basin. I think the original plan had solid fencing on both sides of that basin. The fencing has been made transparent on the residential side so that they can keep an eye on that area and make sure it doesn't become an attractive nuisance. And then we did add the landscape condition for particular species and design to minimize pedestrian traffic at the project edges. There were also concerns about solar access. A lot of our single-family homes are either required to be built with solar panels or using solar panels as they're being heavily supported by the state through multiple programs. So there are some multi-story buildings proposed as part of the project site. So there's concerns related to their shade and shadowing for adjacent properties. So the applicant did provide a 3D animation of shadowing both for winter and summer solstice, which would be the time of the year for winter when the shadows are longest and there's less daylight hours, and then the time of the year when the sun is at its highest point and less shadowing. So I have those on the next couple of slides, but Luke might need to push play. And you can feel free to let us know if you want to see that again. So that was the December. Mark would like to see that again, and the video is approximately 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then that pause in the middle is noon.
Okay, one more time.
Councilmember Funk asked for one more if we could get another go around.
I think if we don't give it enough time, it jumps a little bit at the beginning.
So you said this was from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, the shadows?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And you said where it stops, so it almost looks at like in the December from 8:00 to noon is where the houses are experiencing some shadow, and then from noon on, the shadow is off of the house. Is that how you would interpret that video then, Kelly?
Yes, I too would love to see it again to give you a more specific answer on that. I can certainly look at it on my computer and we can confirm that definitely and see it again when we get to the end of the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
And Kelly, if you could clarify the sequence of the buildings that we see to the left of the project buildings. It looks like house, garage, garage, house, house, garage, garage, house, house.
But I want to confirm. Yeah, I believe that the applicant used, you know, Google Earth imaging to can build what they could within their model so that you would have an idea of sort of the height of those buildings and how the shadows interplay between those. So I believe that is what the applicant's design team, you know, saw out there. And the smaller buildings are, I believe, detached garages set towards the rear of the sites. So this one is summer. I think we crashed it.
Waiting for Councilmember DeDara's to say, "God, all of technology."
And what we will try and do if we can get past these slides is we can try and pull up just the animations on our computer for after the presentation, which will hopefully work better, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, because I want to see June again. We've seen December.
Yes, we will. We will try and do that.
Okay. So right there is the pause and then, which is noon time, and it seems that the shading is off of the houses right about noon, and then kind of moves in an easterly direction. Okay. If you want to go ahead and move on to June. And that, we didn't see shading on any of the houses, is that correct?
Yeah, our June solstice, summer solstice, sunshine is pretty up in the air.
Right, so these are kind of the two extremes. I'm just going to ask, I hope everyone else has seen this blurry and it's not just my eyes. Oh, thank you. Okay. If there's, I'm noticing members in the public with hands raised will have public comments at a certain time where you can come up and ask questions. Right now, we'll just go through the report, but you'll have time to ask questions during that time. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next, and hopefully we can get that slide a little crisp, more crisp.
Not more crisp, but we can keep going till we get a graphic where maybe we need some additional.
Would it help if we closed out and then reopened it? Or is it something else going on and not PowerPoint?
Maybe those of you with really good eyesight, that doesn't hurt to look at, but it's not.
Wonderful.
Let's use this. So there were also some neighborhood concerns about project sightlines. It is a commercial development next to residential properties, and so there are concerns obviously related to sort of window overlook, residential overlook from those second and third floor buildings and stories. It's a concern that we see a lot when there's a residential project next to a commercial project that's being proposed. The project does meet the height standards of our commercial zone where we allow 35 feet of occupied space. The specific plan does allow additional height for some architectural features and roof features. Additional height is also allowed in the commercial retail zone for architectural variety. The proposed buildings, I believe in the modeling, were at 35 feet, just for your reference. Another good reference, the home to suites across the street is about 44 feet to its main story, and then that tower feature extends to about 49 feet. So these are taller commercial buildings. If the council wants to consider some conditions related to building overlook, there are a couple of options. DRC review and approval could be required just so that there's some additional review of building details once those are more completely designed. We've also seen projects where we can limit living space windows or make some modification to the sill height of those to ensure that it's not as easy to look out of those. I believe in the staff report, there was also a recommendation that you could consider limiting balconies on certain north-facing elevations to avoid those types of conflicts. We got one slide out of it. Let's see what we can do. Zoom seems to have frozen or lost sound.
Hi, Phil.
Hello, Susan. I'm just kind of wondering why it got so quiet.
Yeah, well, we lost, we lost the whole council.
We did?
Yes, we lost the.
We got disconnected from the inside world. Okay.
Yeah, apparently internet just died in the council chambers.
Oh, no.
They're trying to recover that.
Oh, no. Okay.
So.
That makes sense. All right.
Do we need to?
Rochelle?
Hi, Phil.
Hi.
Hi, Rochelle. I am trying to text Laura because obviously we can't see what's going on.
No, we're cut off.
Laura, I texted her the Zoom was frozen with no sound, and she said she texted back, "Internet died."
Yeah, internet died, so we're all lost out here together.
Right, so we're all in, out of the ozone, and I don't know if I don't know what's happened to the, to the public.
I'm not seeing any members of the public on this Zoom.
There's a number of them, Brian. There's 11 attendees.
Okay, I've not seen it on my screen.
And I just got texted by one of them who says she's here.
Yes.
So apparently, we're the, we're the remaining face of the meeting, and we've lost everybody who's actually in chambers.
And apparently, it's still recording. I think they can hear us, I believe.
Yes, I believe we are live on YouTube. Brian, did you want to call Laura?
I could call her.
Okay, and let her know what needs to be done.
Yeah, I'll call her and we'll sort it out.
Okay, thank you. And in the meantime, we'll just wait.
Right, and I'm told by somebody who is in the room that, that they can hear us.
Yes. That does sound correct.
Okay.
So our Zoom is still working, but we're not getting the feed from the council chambers, obviously.
Right.
So let's wait and see what Brian says after he talks with somebody in the council chambers.
And we appreciate everyone's patience in staying with us through this technical challenge.
Yes.
We will try to get this back as quickly as possible.
Rochelle? Hello, Rochelle? Are you there? Are you there? All right, I'm gonna try calling you. Looks like you, you, you take, you take your mute off? Yeah, I'm not hearing you.
Hi Brian.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, let me just call you on your cell.
Um, okay.
Will that work?
Yeah, I just, the main thing I wanted everybody to know, I'm assuming the meeting stopped until they can figure out the technical difficulties, is that correct?
Yeah, let, let, let me just tell you, um, the meeting has been in recess since the internet went down, so there's not been any business conducted while we've been offline.
Okay.
Um, that's one. Two, um, they are, uh, working on it to see if they can get it, the internet back on. And, um, and they will not be coming out of recess until that's happened. And, um, I, I do see that up on the screen here, it's giving that information about the internet being down. Um, and then.
I did that, I shared my screen.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you for doing that. Um, and then.
Can you add there in recess, Susan, so nobody worries that, that it's happening and they can't see?
All right, and then the last thing is, um, Laura's gonna call me back at 7:15 with an update, which is like five minutes from now. Um, and then we're gonna have to decide how to proceed with regards to the balance of the agenda, which, um, could include the re-noticing it for your July meeting. And, um, and if there's anything that needs to be heard before July, scheduling a special meeting. But let's, before we work out those logistics, let's, um, let's wait for Laura to call me back and then I'll report back to you.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate the update. I just want to thank you all for your patience. We are working on it. Uh, there's apparently, uh, 22 people in person for some of the items on the agenda tonight, and so we really are trying to fix it so we can take care of this tonight while everybody's committed the time. Uh, we are calling Spectrum, who is our internet provider, and we will let you know more as soon as we know more.
All right, it is looking like we could be back up. Give us a moment as we're getting everything together.
I can hear you, Madam Mayor, but not see you.
I know we're still in the middle of some technical issues, so please bear with us.
Do you want the technical difficulty sign back up again?
I think we should be okay, uh, cause we do have the, the task at our city, city council will continue shortly. Uh, they just have to reboot some things, so. I'm hoping it won't take long.
All right, one by one, we'll get booted up here. We actually could continue without video if we needed to, but gratefully we don't. All right, and all of our attendees are still here. Okay. Thank you all for your patience, both those of you who have been in the Zoom room for a while, wondering if we are ever coming back, and for those of you here in person. Uh, I think, um, I'll ask our city clerk, what I think I'll do is get going while we, we have some videos, some not, but go ahead and get our meeting going again. Okay. Oh, and there I'm frozen. That's always a lovely look. My favorite, the frozen look. All right, I think I'm going to turn that camera off. See, I turned the camera off on my side and it didn't even do it. All right. Kelly, help me put up a slide. It looks like I looked at Charles and went, oh my gosh. Exactly, exactly. I was thinking that same thing. All right, I'm gonna, I really want to turn that camera off now. All right, so, uh, I will ask Ms. Gleason, did we want to put up the remainder of the slides and finish that out?
I believe that Luke is running the presentation, so he is working on it. Um, I did check the presentation and we were at the end, um, there are a couple um, clarification amendments we wanted to make to the resolution that we can go over, um, a little bit later. Um, and so I think if we wanted to continue with questions, we could do that. Unfortunately, we won't have visual yet.
Okay.
But we can answer as many questions as we can. Okay, let's go ahead and do that then. Uh, so we'll go ahead and start with council questions, and I think Councilmember Bobo was going to start us off.
Well, I had numerous questions. I was kind of hoping maybe the council member Funker, Mayor Proton News, might ask some of them, but I'll, I'll proceed. But I do have numerous questions. Um, Kelly, great presentation as always, but I, um, question for you on the, um, kind of historically of the zoning of this area. The, uh, the property in question, both that, which is within the specific plan and the one parcel that's outside of it. Um, that, that's been zone commercial retail for many years, correct?
Yeah, at least as far back as our 2000 general plan. Um, it wasn't on the rezoning page, I don't believe uh, for that time, so it was commercial prior to that.
Okay, and in, in relationship to that, the colony homes north of there were built about 15 years ago, maybe? Something like.
Yeah, the application for that subdivision came in 2002, and I think that most of them were constructed around 2003, 2004.
And that was rezoned from a, from a lower density at the time?
Yes, um, yeah, I don't recall, but the, the 2000 general plan allowed us to do the plan development overlay, which allowed smaller lots than would normally be allowed in that zone.
And then obviously we have several homes on. And then obviously, we have several homes on the end of Mira Saw being constructed right now, just coming to completion. The other houses on your saw were built again about 15 years ago or so. Then you have the two houses on Obispo that have been there much longer. And do you, I mean, by much longer, I mean decades, and they, was this property, as far as you know, ever zoned something other than commercial retail? Since the city came into existence?
Not as far as I know. I don't know that we looked this afternoon all the way back through county records.
Okay, got it. And then, so the, a couple of things, I'm gonna jump around here, but on the pictures you have here, the loading, you know, you showed the trucks and the trucks pulling straight through the property. So not straight, but they, you know, they come in and they would go out another place where they wouldn't have to turn around. But generally, loading at a big store like that is done, they back to a loading dock. But, you know, in the picture, they're parked alongside the back of the store. And what I'm curious about is there going to be a lot of backing there? And is there going to be a lot of, you know, beep 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 sort of loading noises? I don't see provision regarding hours, limits on hours of loading.
Yeah, I know the applicant, I think the grocery, the grocery tenant might be here as well. It's a different model, what we've been told than like a standard grocery store where like, they actually have to back to a loading dock. It is more of a pull-up unloading situation. So I'm not going to say that we guarantee that a truck never has to back up to park properly. But it is not the traditional grocery store where you actually back to a loading platform. It is more of like a pull-up style. We've also looked at hours of operation for loading and unloading and delivery trucks on other projects. And I know that sometimes there's complications associated with that because we can't control the delivery truck schedule. And we found that sometimes when we do limit hours, we end up with a lot of trucks just idling, waiting for their delivery time to come. So six and one half dozen of other in that regard.
Got it. Thank you. And then it's mentioned on page 82 that the grocery store is lower than the properties on Mira Saw. And this might be a public works thing. You know how much lower? It doesn't look a lot lower when you're out there, but.
It's not much. They will be grading the site down in order to sort of get drainage to work and all those things. It is not significantly lower, I think. If you look at the sound wall sections and some of those designs, you'll see a very small retaining wall with either a sound wall or a fence on top. So I think it's only maybe two or three feet, but I know that the projects engineer is in the audience and can come up at that time and answer that more specifically.
Got it. And there's a condition number 15 that talks about anybody, if there is residential on the second and third floors of some of these buildings, that they will have to be made aware of or sign off that they understand this is a commercial area. What I'm, and this may be a question for the applicant because he developed these, but the house is currently under construction, almost finished, maybe finished on the Mira Saw cul-de-sac. Do they, have they, as they buy those homes, been made aware that this, of this, that this is commercial zone?
I don't believe the city required a de-notification on those lots when they were created. So that would be a good question for the applicant if he is notified on his own.
Got it. And then you'd mentioned in their staff report that we're talking of three to five-year construction period. And I noticed in the conditions, it talks about if the council approved this tonight, that the entitlements are effective tomorrow. But then it talks about they have two years to perfect those, I guess. But that's, that doesn't mean build, that means through a tentative parcel map, is that correct?
So there's a couple of different layers. So the tentative parcel map for the subdivision map act is granted entitlement for two years, and they have to record their final map within that two-year period or receive an extension to keep that map alive. When we approve master plans of development concurrently with a tentative map, they follow a concurrent schedule. So they would have to pull building permits within that two years for their phase one in order for the entitlement to stay alive. Or they could apply for extensions. We anticipate that they're going to pull building permits for at least a portion of the buildings within the first two years.
And then doing that, how long does that keep alive? Let's say, let's say it's a three-phase project overall, how long do they have then?
So for a large commercial center, when building permits have been pulled for site improvements and buildings, and they're just leaving pads for construction, we don't typically say that any entitlements have expired beyond that point.
Okay. And because, you know, we're talking about a three to five-year construction time period, but that's not continuous construction, or is this vision that it could be continuous construction for that period?
It could be. I know the applicant can probably speak to that, the owner. I know in our real estate market right now, it's hard to know if banks will lend and if tenants will come.
Right, okay. And then as part of that, as a segue from that, the, you know, we talk in here in the staff report about, you know, having commercial on the bottom, but then the top, second and third floors could be either office space in some of these buildings or residential. But that decision would be made down the road depending by the applicant, based on market conditions, et cetera. Given that, you know, right now, the market is, if you build a house or an apartment, you can sell it or rent it. You know, maybe that's going to change with mortgage rates or something, but as opposed to, it's somewhat, seems somewhat harder to run out office space. And maybe this is a question for the applicant, is how realistic is it to think that this really could be office space on top?
I think it's a good question for the applicant. I know that he has been marketing to some larger sort of office tenants that would need additional space, and I think he's happy to build it out that way. But I don't know that he's had any of those tenants sign on yet.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then the, I'm curious. We have the specific plan area, and then we have the parcel that's not part of the specific plan. We talk about it's allowable to have residences on a second and third floor. First, in my mind, for comparison, if I was a developer and I bought the old Kmart property, could I put residences, you know, tear it down, build something new with residences on the second and third floor? In other words, is this a common entitlement? Is it done just through conditional use permit or what?
Yeah, so right now, any mixed use outside of the downtown zone does require the conditional use permit approval.
Okay, got it. And in regards to some of the conditions, I actually asked you in this, on the break, but I wanted to publicly ask it regarding the shading. For me, I was kind of less concerned, not concerned about the shading from the buildings, but that if the landscaping grows in, I'm a big believer in landscaping, concealing what I'm doing on my side of the fence and what you're doing on your side of the fence. But would the trees kind of supersede the height of the buildings relative to casting shade anyway?
They definitely could, depending on species. I believe in our sort of cursory, non-legal review of the Solar Rights Act, there is information in there about protecting residential solar systems from the installation of new trees and shrubs that might impede that. And I think there's certain restrictions on the hours that can be affected for solar panels and what percentage can be covered by trees and shrubs. So that could be an issue if trees grew very tall.
Because we might also want to require shade trees for purposes of viewing into people's backyard, so that, hey. Almost, in some cases, when I was in planning commission, we would require trees as screening. But it sounds like in this instance, that could almost run into the contradictory aspect of solar rights law.
Yes.
Okay, and then on, and speaking of solar and such, question that Councilmember Funk would probably ask, but is there any provision that needs to require, since we hope to have, you know, jobs here, to require electric charging stations for employees in some of these businesses?
In terms of parking spaces?
Not necessarily parking spaces, but just to have electric charging stations available for residents or employees.
Yeah, so the current California building code that they'll be building under does require a certain percentage of space, spaces be electric vehicle charging.
Yeah, thank you. And then in, in their conditions 53 and 54, 53 talks about, on page 111 from my colleagues, 53 talks about contributing a fee for improvements to Ramona, which is across the freeway, but is part of the overall circulation in this area. How much is that, either in dollar terms or a percentage?
Their traffic engineer might be able to give us the percent impact that this project has towards Ramona. We're currently working with an engineering firm to determine actual cost. And so the cost will be basically based on total cost of the project, total assumed trips, including city background trips, cumulative trips and project trips. And then their percent impact will be based on a per-trip basis.
Okay. And then on condition 54 says, "The project shall construct public improvements along El Camino and Del Rio in general conformance with the city council approved Del Rio commercial area specific plan." So those are things they would actually have to construct? Or is that things they would contribute to in terms of contribute to, and then it might be built by other future developers?
So condition 54 is basically their requirement to construct their frontage improvements in substantial conformance with the plan lines that were adopted based on some of the Wallace and W Trans studies that were brought forward to council late last year, maybe, or even before then. And then condition number 55 lays those particular improvements out in greater detail.
Okay, because that was my next question. The, what's listed in 55 in specific detail is what's talked about in 54, what's required by 54?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And, okay. Because, you know, the concern, of course, is that, you know, years ago, when the city thought it had to do a lot of improvements on the overpass, we had an estimate of four and a half million. Set aside those numbers for developers and then ended up, two years later, it was going to be 11 million. So my last question is regarding the northbound, the turn lane, the extra turn lane onto northbound 101. Not that, you know, it would be fair to put this all on this developer, but is, are they just contributing to the ultimate construction of that particular improvement?
Yes, so the way the condition reads is that they, they just pan and luffy towards that with the added capacity at the intersection of El Camino and Del Rio. That improvement is not needed for this project, for the Del Rio Ranch project, for the buildout of Emerald Ridge, for the People Self-Help projects that are approved, and a number of other projects in the area, plus some cumulative city trips. So we might not need it till sort of way down the line. So they are going to pay in a luffy towards that. I believe part of the specific plan mitigation does require that we look at that cost estimate and make adjustments as needed as time goes on. And projects maybe, you know, don't build for 15 years. We can kind of reassess that. I will also say that the same applicant that owns this parcel is building the Taco Bell parcel, and he is actually building some of those required turn lane improvements, including a very large retaining wall and sort of filling in that additional lane width space.
Right, and we're not imposing the entire cost of that on him, right?
He is eligible for reimbursement for those costs.
Right, which leads me to my question, which is, could we, you know, have the northbound 101 access thing built while costs were not particularly cheap right at the moment, but, you know, before they continue to escalate over the years and then either, you know, front some city money for that, that we would collect from later developers? So it wouldn't come out of, wouldn't come out of this developer's pocket.
I think that you could have that discussion with the applicant. I don't, I would caution us against conditioning the project to do that without that discussion, as there's not like a true nexus. But certainly, if he were agreeable to that, there could be some discussions for that with reimbursement.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I wouldn't want to condition. It's almost more, we want to help make it happen, you know, and then get money from others later. So, okay, thank you, Mayor. That's my questions.
Thank you. Can I clarify something that Councilmember Borbo asked? So on 53, I read that to be Ramona and the right-hand turn lane going on to northbound 101. Is that, so that's both of those, correct? That right-hand turn lane that is partially being constructed with a retaining wall right now and Ramona Road are both part of 53?
Yes, the movement of Ramona Road is kind of needed for that traffic flow to work efficiently and effectively.
And so I'm reading that correctly. That's both in 53. And then what I also heard you say is that unlike 2000, you know, a council long before we were all here, a council that had, you know, gone forward with the best information they had and approved something, and then like Councilmember Borbo said, two years later was triple the price. What I think I heard you say is there will be some sort of an escalator in there that whatever prices are in the moment, you know, given these parameters, that will be the contribution needed from whatever projects, you know, have been conditioned over the years.
Yes, and I think our current estimates, when we look at just the addition of a right-hand turn lane, it's very sort of easy to grasp and understand. I think when we were in our roundabout phase, and then Caltrans changed roundabout design requirements and made it much more difficult. You know, it was a much more complex project. So we do have recent cost estimates. We do have numbers from our, from our fee consultants on what those numbers look like and how we do that fairly. And I believe there's already some escalators built into the estimate as well for any cost increases.
The cost increases would naturally occur just given time. So if something doesn't need to be done for another 15 years, that could cost three times as much simply because of inflation and other factors. So that would be taken into consideration. Yes, okay, thank you. All right. Thank you for letting me clarify that. So I'll look to council for other questions. I, Councilmember Derris, followed by Mayor Proton Newsom.
One real simple question. I'm looking through the packet. How tall is the sound wall?
I believe it's a six-foot sound wall on top of the retaining wall.
On top of the retail base, so.
Yeah, the, I can look for those.
From the residential side, I'm curious how tall it's going to be from their side.
Oh, sure, from their side. Let me take a look.
Yeah, because I think that's from their side where it's going to be more important.
Councilmember Derris, while Kelly is looking that up, you had asked an initial question when we were sort of moving into council comments. Those that were on Zoom lost that connection in between the talk of the shadow study and then till we got back up. If you could repeat what that question was, I think that might be helpful if you remember.
I do, I was just kidding. I had to think about it for a second. Question I had was, if we had minor changes to this project, whatever might be considered minor, would it have to go back to planning commission or just DRC? Or couldn't it just stay in the decision be made here, final to simplify the process? Just want to know what our limitations are, or what potential can of worms we could be opening if we go too far.
Sure, and I believe the response was, if it's approved as conditioned, it would just be approved here tonight, and they would be able to proceed with building permits for any of the buildings as long as they were consistent with the design requirements of the specific plan and this use permit. But the council could, at their discretion, require additional review for future buildings.
If we add conditions of approval, because I think it said in here that we could add conditions or change conditions, would that, could that be done here and not have to go to review? Okay, that's my question.
And the retaining walls are six feet on the residential side.
Mayor Proton Newsom.
Thanks. Some of us lost about 10 minutes of the conversation, so it's easier to be in council chambers. The question I have is, how is this property modifications on 53 and 54 affecting the other developments on the other side, such as Del Rio Ranch? Are there any impacts on this project to future development?
Sure, so what we tried to do with our conditions this time, knowing that we've run into issues of stalled development in the past, is we've written the condition to tie sort of that, that traffic capacity to issuance of building permits, which would allow other developments in the area to proceed as long as there's capacity. And if this project, for some reason, didn't build some of the pads for 20 years, they wouldn't necessarily get to hold those trips hostage. Other people could move forward within whatever capacity remains at the, at the intersection based on a particular day and time that they're looking at constructing.
Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I thank Councilmember Borbo for asking a number of my questions, doing me that favor. Also, Madam Mayor, I did not hear a request for ex parte. Did we wish to make one on this, on this matter?
Thank you. Yes, I had written that down. It wasn't in my, in my agenda notes here, so we'll do that before we go to public comment.
Okay. Then, coming back to something that Councilmember Borbo asked about. with regard to the history of this property having been a, a, that the original specific plan did not include the northernmost section of this property that is more immediately adjacent to the houses on Viviento. Did, did any, when that changed and became part of this, did that change what kinds of buildings could be, could take place on this property? With respect to, to, did it change the height of potential buildings? Or any of the setback requirements that, that existed previously in the plant, general plan and ordinance ordinances of the city?
Sure. So mixed use development, office development, retail development, those kinds of uses are allowed throughout the commercial retail zone. And when we did go back for some amendments to the specific plan, we did add some uses, especially like the RV park for the Del Rio Ranch site and a couple of things like that. But really we tried to match the commercial retail zone as best we could. And sort of undo some of the more specific use controls that were in the, the original Walmart plan. In terms of height, the specific plan has, does have some additional allowances. So 35 feet is the occupiable height than both just the regular commercial retail zone and within the specific plan. The specific plan does allow architectural features and roof forms to go up to 45 feet. Our commercial retail zone allows those features to go up to 40 feet with an approval of an administrative use permit. So there's a couple of differences there. The regular commercial retail zone does not have a side setback listed, although usually there's some setback that comes out of the building code requirement. It's usually five feet. The specific plan noted a 30-foot required setback from the adjacent residential uses on the east side. So the applicants provided a 22-foot setback to fit in with the circulation and give additional setback. But it's kind of in between the specific plan and our minimum for the commercial retail zone.
Okay. Thank you. And with regard to building height, I recall you mentioned that, that the home to suites, which is sort of across the El Camino Real there, that that is a 44-foot height in terms of occupiable plus 49 feet to the towers. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So the tallest heights that, that could happen in the Del Rio Marketplace project would be shorter than what's seen across the street at Home to Suites.
That's correct. Yeah. And the specific plan, a maximum of 45 feet. So pretty close, but less.
Okay. If those additional architectural features exacerbated solar shading issues in, on the properties to the north, what would be the recourse that property owners there could, might have at that point?
Sure. So if the council were concerned about that happening, and we can confirm with the applicant team how tall the building was in their, their basic shadow modeling, then you could add a condition that any roof forms or features on the exchange one building or the other office building that might have some solar shading impacts be designed in such a way to not exacerbate shading. And then they could obviously maybe have roof forms on the more southerly portion of the building based on the sun angle, you know, and kind of stay at the 35 feet. That's something that could be added. But I'd also like to check in with the applicant team and see what roof height they assumed in their solar shading study that we all have seen in choppy form and hopefully we'll see better later.
Thank you. I would also like to hear that from the applicant and also appreciate hearing from the applicant. The extent to which the applicant would be comfortable with the condition you just mentioned. And also with a, with potentially a condition of no balconies on the north face of Exchange One. The, and would it, would it be possible for the council to place that kind of condition on the project tonight?
Yes, those are conditions that can be added.
Okay. With regard to the acoustic study, so the impacts on the neighborhood, both north and east. When that study is done, as, as the developer sees what tenants are going to occupy which properties and what characteristics those uses might have, who reviews the results of that study? And what recourse do people have if at that point it appears to them that the piece of their neighborhood would be unduly affected?
Generally, when they have those conditions, those just come in with building permits. So it's just a staff level review. The council could add a condition to refer that to the DRC or the planning commission, if you felt that that was appropriate.
Okay. That, and then the construction itself, can you tell us what the proposed phasing is?
The applicant can probably best speak to that. I know that the grocery tenant is part of phase one and they're attempting to build some of the adjacent retail to minimize future impacts to the grocery tenant.
Okay. And the, for, what hours of operation for construction are allowed under our city code?
Our municipal code allows 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. And the construction that's currently occurring in the neighborhood, but next to the freeway. So that would be on El Camino Real adjacent to Del Rio Road. Is that on land owned by the same owner?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I would, no, we, we have heard, you know, I have, have heard concerns from neighbors about, and I think that came into the, to all the council by email, concerns from neighborhoods, neighbors that those, that the city time limits for construction are not being honored currently. And I would ask the applicant to address if the applicant is willing to communicate with general contractor and subcontractors and expectation, a firm expectation that if they wish to do business on the larger projects, that, that the, that the city's hours of operation be honored. And that's, that's why, that concludes my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ex parte?
So, no, I still have some questions. Thank you. Kelly, with, let's see, one of the, one of the comments that we received from a member of the public, and it was noticed in this, noted in the staff report, is that we had sent out the staff report indicating a sound wall on the northern portion, when there isn't a sound wall, it's a fence. And so I think there's been some confusion and some frustration on the side of residents. Could we speak to, to that?
Yes, understandably so. So when the project moved forward to DRC, we generally take projects that are sort of in a more conceptual realm. And the applicant submitted a plan that had that, that call out that wasn't accurate. We did clarify that at DRC. Unfortunately, when notices go out a second time, our administrative staff usually just includes the same site plan and wasn't aware that there were changes made. And so those notices did get sent out with that same site plan, because it's kind of a template that we work off. So that, that was unfortunate. We've clarified that at a couple of meetings. We apologize to the, to the neighborhood that it, that it went out again and caused additional confusion. There was, there was never in the, the applicant's mind going to be a sound wall in that, in that location.
Thank you. With regards to a condition number 29 on page 106. As I read that, I understand that we're wanting the first floor to be at least 16 feet high. When I read this, it, it's a second floor height of multi-story buildings shall be a minimum of 16 feet from the finished floor elevation of the ground floor. That makes it sound like the second story has to be 16.
Yeah. We amended this condition at planning commission and we have a slide. Once we get that up, that amends it again for more clarity.
Okay. Thank you. I thought it, it could certainly be planning speak and I don't understand it. And I realized planning commission was just a week ago. So there's been a lot that's had to happen in that week. So thank you. I think my in lieu of fee questions were answered. Thank you, council member Borbo. Let's see. When we talk about the potential, you know, light industrial uses, you mentioned artisanal uses. And I, as I'm thinking of deliveries, like I think I heard you say that it wouldn't be, you know, you don't have a semi tractor trailer coming in. So would this be more along the lines of like FedEx or UPS, like, you know, any of us?
Yeah. I think those scale trucks, I mean, I think of some of our local businesses that you take pieces of wine barrels and sort of craft them into art and make furniture. And some of those things require, you know, something larger than just a pickup truck to move around. But certainly the scale of a UPS truck or smaller, I would anticipate.
Okay. Thank you. I was looking at the, the draw, you know, the kind of sketch out here. And it has a, for the grocery store, it has a grocery cart area. And it got me to thinking, you know, this isn't something we've had come up in a long time, but something we have talked about at council is a potential, you know, grocery cart, you know, whether you call it an ordinance or some sort of enforcement. And I'm wondering, is there, is there something in the applicant may have already thought of this, the grocery store may be thinking of this. But I've noticed more and more of those carts throughout town. And particularly when I go to say Vons, there are very few carts, like a lot of them have just, you know, disappeared. But I do see them on the street corners and we've had that be a problem. Is there, is there something that we had a conversation about, you know, potential with making sure that those don't end up wandering off without putting, you know, I certainly don't want to put severe restrictions and extra costs here, but is there some technology nowadays that's being used?
Yeah. We haven't had a specific conversation about carts, so they might refer to that. I do know that we've had conversations about site security in general. And this particular applicant has, has told us that they intend on sort of keeping the site and managing the site. And they do, for most of their commercial sites, they do have sort of a private security company that comes along and does monitor their sites. So we have talked about security in general and they would be doing that on the site as well, I believe.
Okay. But we haven't had the grocery cart discussion. Okay. The last thing I wanted to ask is a couple of my colleagues have, have inquired about, you know, zoning and, you know, what was zoned, what when? And it's been, you know, commercial retail for some time. Could you, could you tell us if we, if we look at that, if we look at whether it's the specific plan or even that portion that's outside of the specific plan? Could you give us an idea of what could go there right now by current entitlement without any approval?
Sure. So if the uses are listed as allowed uses in our allowed use table, I believe you can build up to 40,000 square feet on a commercial property before you trigger a use permit approval. So as long as you meet the standards of our underlying zoning district, so 10-foot setback at the rear of the site, if there's residential, no setbacks per se along the side, although building code usually requires some amount of setback to meet those standards. Then it would come in with just a construction permit. It could be up to the 35 feet in height if there were office uses or a larger tenant space needed on the site. Again, adding residential and mixed use currently requires the use permit.
Okay. So you could have something, say maybe five feet from the property line and 35 feet high with a certain number of uses, say possibly would a hotel be one or what would those potential uses be? Let me look those up real quick.
Sure.
I've got that list available. Kelly, if you want me to, I've got the list in front of me.
Sure.
It's quite a wide variety. I mean, this is our, our general commercial zone. This is our whitest variety that we have in the city, which in the specific plan, the list isn't narrowed, except for the fact that we did prohibit drive-through restaurants and fuel stations on these sites to reduce traffic. But other than that, the list has a very wide variety of tourist-serving, retail uses, even light industrial office. And this is a very, very long list of uses. That's just pretty much, the retail zone is the widest variety of any commercial zone in the city.
Okay. So a pretty, a pretty broad spectrum of what could go there, maybe five feet out, 35 feet up. Okay. All right. Thank you, Director. That is helpful. And let's see. I think that is it for the rest of my questions right now. So before we go to public comment, I will ask council members for any ex parte. And ex parte is where we disclose to you, the public, if we have had any conversations outside of this public process that will impact our decision-making process. And so I will go down from my left to my right.
I have none.
I have none.
None.
All right. So the DRC meeting, nothing that'll impair my judgment today.
Okay. Councilmember Funk.
I spoke to a constituent, Sierra Madre, who is a neighbor to the project and had shaped questions I asked.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will go ahead and open up public comment. And as is our standard operating procedure, when we have a project like this, is we do ask the applicant to come forward first, because they're typically questions that we have at the applicant. And so we may have a little back and forth. So I will ask the applicant or his representative to, to come forward. And we could also have, you know, other questions as, you know, you probably heard us tonight. So please welcome and state your name, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Patty Whelan. For the project. I provide the planning and entitlement management for the project.
Could you maybe bring the mic a little closer? You're a little.
All right. Is that better? Can you hear me now? Is that?
It's a little better. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm glad to have the project now in front of you. This has been a long process. We've been working with the city, with the, with staff to come up with a design that is working for the site, is working for the uses, is modernizing what was already approved years ago in the specific plan for, for the original shopping center that was intended. So we have felt with the design, it's been, it's been a creative design that is with a goal as community development had requested, that this site, this facility enable more of a pedestrian, open access, mixed use. It would allow for businesses with the, with the offices and the light industrial, the goal there being businesses for the city of Tascadero. We are also very excited about having the anchor Valley Fresh Market to be, to serve this community and bring a level of quality and, and local market for Tascadero. So that was a great start for designing around that. So that being said, you've heard a lot about the project. The staff report has been really thorough. With me here tonight actually is the full team. But first and foremost is the owner, Clint Pierce, is here to answer any questions. Additionally, we do have a presentation for you, and that's Scott Martin, the lead architect and site designer. So he can answer as well, a lot of the questions that you've been asking about the buildings. And of course he will also tackle the shading exhibit and answer those questions. Additionally, with us, we have, we have Joe Fernandez is traffic planning and engineering. And I know you've got questions on that as far as the analysis that was done. And I think your questions more have to do with the accounts and the, you know, and the feasibility responsibility of the project. So we have also our lead civil engineer, in case you have any questions about the site design, that's Susan Roberts. That's Susan Roberts with us. Additionally, um, uh, like to say that we do have, uh, the owners of Valley Fresh Market, Greg and Teresa King. So I know there've been questions from their tenancy as to the operations. And so they're here for that. And we do also have, uh, for the general contractor, we have Derek Williams. So if you have questions about the operations of, um, how that will go, um, he's here. There certainly were some questions that you've asked that I can answer. But I believe maybe we should just allow public comment at this point, so we can get all the questions. And then depending on which of the specialty areas you have questions, we can revisit those. We're all here and we can jump up.
What I'd prefer to do is, uh, let's have council ask questions and get those asked and answered. After we have public comment, if there are more questions that we need to ask for clarification, we'll do that.
All right, that'd be great.
So if you, did you write some down or would you like us to go through what those questions are for you?
Why don't you go through, I was writing down some, but perhaps it would be better to go.
Okay, so I'll go in reverse order of how I started. Councilmember Funk, I think you had a few.
Yes, um, so, uh, with regard to, um, on the, uh, construction, first, I'll just, I'll start towards the end of my list. The, uh, can, uh, for the, uh, general contractor who is present, can we have a commitment that, uh, the, that the general contractor and subcontractors, um, will make, a specific effort to comply with the city's seven AM to nine PM time restrictions on construction?
Well, I know certainly I can answer that question that, um, yes, that commitment is there. So, uh, but definitely, uh, we can revisit this one when Derek Williams is up here, so.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I had asked with regard to the this, um, if the, if you would be comfortable with conditions from the council that, uh, restricted the use of balconies, um, on the Exchange One building on the north face? Um, and also, um, there's the second thing that, um, I'm, I'm looking for my notes here, that Kelly had had, uh, suggested regarding that building. Oh, that, that the, um, additional height features allowed above the occupiable uh, areas, um, for architectural features on Exchange One, that they not exacerbate the solar shading of the neighbors to the north. Would you be comfortable with those conditions?
Okay, well, first of all, I can say, um, we're absolutely willing to condition that. So there will be no balconies on the northern wall of Exchange One to try to cut down, I mean, to enable more privacy. So, yes, on that one. The, uh, the building height and the solar impact, you know, that's what, that's kind of developing right now. So I'll let the architect answer that because he can describe, first of all, the analysis and the, the elevation of the building. But at this point, um, we're actually trying to understand what the responsibility will be for impacting. I mean, it was also mentioned about trees. There are some question marks on that one. So I don't have a solid answer for you on that. I think it would be helpful, um, to have Scott Martin's, uh, review with the shading.
Okay, thank you. Those, I think, were, were my applicant-related questions.
I, I think, uh, Councilmember Funk, you did have a question regarding proposed phasing.
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So it might be helpful to, um, is it possible to get the site plan up on the screen? So first of all, I would say that, um, the owner has made, as, you know, a solid commitment as possible to construct as much in the first phase as will, um, service and tie down the, the circulation front in the buildings on the front. So when I see the site plan, um, the plan is to go ahead and construct with Valley Fresh, the retail building right next to Valley Fresh, and then also the two exchange buildings, the light industrial buildings that face onto that circular, um, driveway. And then, of course, uh, it will also include the frontage improvements around the entire site that are required. So the goal would be, um, to ultimately end up with remaining pads for the remaining structures. So that's general, I'm sure, um, I can just imagine what I'm leaving out on that one from civil engineering. But I do know that the site, part of the challenge is to design the, you know, the infrastructure for it as well. So, um, that would be the goal. Then, as you can see, uh, Phase One, the Exchange One, Exchange Two, Valley Fresh, and Retail Five. And pads will remain.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant before going to the rest of all the comments? Councilmember Burbow?
I do have two quick questions. Um, first following on the Councilmember Funk's question regarding phasing. You know, you never know what the market holds. You build this stuff, you know, we have a recession or something and you're, you know, you want to hold off on some of these other buildings and we have a bunch of dusty pads. What about the, uh, phasing of the landscaping or particularly the perimeter trees that would give the site a sense of looking like it's, you know, sort of fully occupied, even if it's not? As, in other words, we're not going to have dust and dirt along the El Camino and Del Rio frontages after Phase One?
I've actually raised that question with the landscape architect because we know that we want to try to coordinate getting that landscaping and those trees going early on, um, but setting it up so that the future construction crews, uh, don't damage it. So we are working on it, but definitely there is the goal to get as much of the landscaping in place, particularly the trees and the privacy dollars.
Yeah, I mean, not every tree because you've got future construction, but I'm talking about the perimeter. So, and then
Yes.
On this discussion regarding solar, I'm concerned that we might go down the path of making you do some, you know, multi-hundreds, thousands of dollars worth of change regarding sol- solar shading. When the impact on residents with existing solar systems might be measured in a few hundred dollars a month. And so would you be willing, if it would be legal for us to do so, to condition you to say you're going to, you know, reimburse the, residents with existing solar systems for any impact, uh, so you don't have to, you know, re-engineer an entire building? You know, with that huge, uh, cost ratio, if you will.
Well, I'm going to have to be careful on how to answer that, um, still with so much unknown on that one.
Sure.
Because right now, I, I mean, as far as the responsibility goes, if one building is built before a nearby home has actually installed solar, then does that impose a responsibility on the future solar to be placed around the shading?
Sure, no, I understand.
So, question, I mean, but definitely we're understanding the importance of this and, uh, the willingness to cooperate.
Okay, was I just concerned, conceptually, we sometimes in government will impose, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar condition to mitigate a, you know, a thousand dollar cost.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm getting at, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let me see if we have any other council questions prior to, no. All right, so thank you very much for now and we'll go ahead and...
Not a bear?
Yes, Councilmember Funk.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Burbow, uh, didn't follow up on his question, so if I might put that to the applicant, uh, that's the market owner, to explain how the truck unloading, you know, the, and loading of the semi-trailers, works without them having to do a lot of backing up.
Well, for that one, then, let me defer right now to Greg King.
Hello, Council and Mayor, it's nice to be here, thank you. Real quick, I wanted to say, uh, my wife is seventh generation here in the North County. And her grandpa graduated from Atascadero High. And he actually slept in this building when he was in the service in the late forties, early fifties. So I just found that out tonight, I was, that was, that was pretty cool. Uh, I'm the first generation on the Central Coast. We've been here, um, since I was two years old, though. So speaking to the, the noise, you know, the, that has changed. You know, it used to be where everybody had to have this big, um, slots going down, I can't, I can't think of the name of it at the moment. But now we don't have those, you know, the backup to the truck, about the, I can't think of the word. But anyway, now they all have lifts, so the little trucks and the big trucks all come with lifts. And it's much more efficient, it's much more quiet. They come in, they park, they, you know, sometimes they idle their car. If it's a refrigerator, there'll be a small idle going as we take their, uh, products. But, you know, from little delivery to, to bigger trucks, um, they're all very quick now. So we receive Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And our receiving hours is generally seven to one. And by one o'clock, it's really quiet. It, you know, of course, things depend on the holidays and, and weekends and whatnot. But it's much more efficient. I've been doing this my entire life since I was fourteen, I'm fifty-four. And it was noisy and loud and there was a lot of exhaust going on. It's just not that way anymore, it's, it's pretty quick. And we have, um, we've always done everything we can to be good neighbors. Uh, you know, I grew up on the Central Coast here, I lived in Passau, I met my wife, uh, when we lived in Passau, I lived in Passau, so cheap. I opened that Albertson's up there. And, you know, we, we love to serve the community. We want to be good neighbors, we want to be good, uh, community members. So you can count on that from us. We promise that we will do everything we can to make neighbors happy and, uh, keep the noise down and the deliveries. We don't let trucks sit out in front of our store all night, don't do that. We're very efficient. The, the main, uh, wholesaler I'm buying from is CNS and they're the largest wholesale in the country. And I have personal relationships with the West Coast President. And they're very, they've been very, we, I've been with them now for ten years. We opened the Pismo store, we went to them. And they, they do everything they can to help us, to COVID, they were great, you know? But anytime there's any trouble, um, or, you know, I can call them up and they are instantly on it. So we, you can count on that. Any other questions for you guys? Oh, I know one more, shopping carts, shopping carts. We do hourly runs to mop the, clean the floor and get shopping carts. And then when there's a bunch, um, you know, it could be more than once an hour. We also offer full service, so people, if they want to help out to their car, we have somebody help them out and they grab the carts that are in their line. So we're pretty efficient with that. We, we don't have carts all over, uh, anywhere, it happens, but it's very rare. So.
Do you, and do you have any sort of, there, I know there are some companies that have, you know, tracking with their carts or perimeters where they can't. And, and not that I'm saying I'm going to require that, uh, but just, you know, in, in recent years, it's become a, a bigger, a bigger problem.
You know, we, we don't, I've heard about those where they stop at the, uh, south. I don't, I can look into it, though, I have no idea what the costs are. Cost of the carts are about a hundred and fifty dollars each. We generally have, you know, close to a hundred.
Understand, thank you, Councilmember Derris.
Just a quick clarification question, on the, the hours of delivery, you said from seven to one? That seven AM to one PM or seven PM to one?
Seven AM to one PM.
Okay, thank you, that makes a huge difference, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, and, and that's all for now. Thank you. All right, so now we will, um, I would invite any members of the public, uh, who would wish to speak. And what I would ask is when you do come up, let us know your, let us know your name. Uh, and you will have three minutes, you'll see the, the timer there to kind of assist you in that. If you, you know, and, and what I would ask is if you do want to speak, like, start making your way over there so we don't have someone speak and they sit down and people kind of like, let's move because we've kind of got a long item tonight. So we appreciate your support with that. And those of you who are online and want to speak, you can raise your hand and I will get to you in, uh, in order. So, sir.
Honorable Mayor, thank you so much. I'm actually part of the applicant team with a prepared presentation and already getting your hint that you want to move things along. So I'm trying to find the right balance here.
My, my apology, Patty did mention that, I didn't know that ahead of time. So, uh, is this a fairly short presentation or?
I will fly through as fast as I possibly can while trying to answer many of your questions.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that, sir.
I, I appreciate, uh, Scott Martin, Principal Architect with RRM Design Group, representing also the Landscape Architects. So I'm happy to, to dive into some of those as well. Also took some good notes, so I think I can hit quite a few of these, um, on the head. Really just want to say thank you to staff, it's been a pleasure working with them to design this project. Thank you to DRC and Planning Commission. I think every step along the way, the project's gotten better and better. So really excited to be here tonight and show you kind of what we came up with. So, um, I think everybody's really familiar with the site. Just want to make sure that, you know, this was not just throw darts at a board and see where buildings land. The first time I showed the site plan to the developer, I thought he was going to slap me. It was, oh, what's everything doing at a forty-five degree angle? Why is it, that, there's a lot of thought, uh, given to this site. If you look at the solar orientation, you can tell in the red site plan on the right, we are not true north, south, east, west. In fact, true north is kind of diagonally through the site. And I'll get to that when I talk about the solar analysis a little bit. North direction has a lot to do with what you do with your shading. So I think that'll help explain that video a little bit. Really, this is all about sightlines to the city. This is still a gateway project for the city. So really creating a pedestrian environment from the corner, Del Rio and El Camino, into the site to that anchor tenant being the grocery store, of course. And then finding some transitional elements, you know, I, I think everybody in this area has really struggled with, with how to go from a single-family home to a commercial center. And I think that's part of the reason the specific plan came about. We very intentionally, in our design, you can see that the, the idea of transitioning uses from pure retail to the, of, at the center and at the corner to more of a hybrid type of use, whether that's light industrial with some office or some office with some residential above. It's a way to transition back to the neighborhood and feed on the existing context. And it, it aligns almost perfectly with what's directly across the street on El Camino. There's two-story, uh, storage units and light industrial there already. So we really did try to pick up those cues. Also, uh, through the process, we've tried, uh, to listen to the neighborhood. You'll notice that everything along what is now being called the Northern Edge, each one of those is a short end of the building that gets closest to the, to the residential neighborhood. And those short ends, those little nubs on both Exchange One and Office One, align exactly with the paired garages from the neighborhood of the Colony Home. So it was a very intentional design. We're really excited about continuing that development, although, you know, the market is what the market is, it's a bit of a crystal ball right now. So, um, there's a bunch of great site features, it sounds like you're well-versed with the site package. EV parking is there, just for you, Councilmember Funk, but also because I'm required. And, uh, we really did try to focus on, on the people space. This is a job, this is a balance overall for this site, what kind of uses. Is it job center, is it housing center, is it office center? More important than anything, it's people focus. So there's a string of plazas that connect pedestrian space. We heard at DRC, we need stronger pedestrian connections. We created this, this great spine from the public plaza out on the corner that leads you back into the grocery store, into a, another public plaza there. Each one of the sort of individual uses have their own public gathering space that provides some, some, some opportunities for outdoor space. I live here, we all live here because of this amazing environment. So we wanted to really maximize that and, and take advantage. I, I, I'll address the comment just briefly about, um, architectural elements. That's where half us designers start to cringe and go, isn't it all important? What's, um, uh, my biggest issue, uh, Councilmember Funk who brought it up, um, uh, there are some, some requirements for some roof pitches that I would like to see stay. I would like the ability for a roof to take up some of the unoccupied space that is allowed within that height limit because I think the architectural character is much more in keeping with the rest of Atascadero. In fact, the adjacent context and what's around a flat parapet or something like that on, especially exchange buildings would be tough. Now, that being said, I want to explain the solar study a little bit. And my, my poor designer's at home crying right now that you didn't get to see his great work. But, um, the, the two, the reasons we did that solar study is we were worried about, um, solar privacy and rights for the adjacent properties. It is a new thing that's out there. Everybody's required now to put solar on in some way. You have to maintain solar access. What happens when you put a tree in there? And, and luckily, the computer modeling lets us sort of play through a lot of those different scenarios. As mentioned in the staff report, we're about sixty-five feet away from the house. So, so... we chose two times of years, the summer solstice and the winter solstice. The winter solstice is when the sun's lowest in the sky. The summer solstice is when it's highest in the sky. I'll start with the summer because it's the easiest and also happened like two weeks ago. It is so high in the sky that even at eight AM, you never cast a shadow on any of the adjacent property, on the ground, on the house, on the garage, on anything at any time during the day. Um, now as the seasons change, the worst case scenario or the, the portion of the year where the sun is lowest in the sky is that December 21st. That is the winter solstice. For those of us who live here all the time, uh, it's hard to get out of bed at eight AM because so many days you don't see that, that, that sun even coming up. And that's what that study is showing, that you cast really long, long shadows at eight AM. What we modeled was a 35 foot, what worst case scenario, a 35 foot wall with another 10 foot roof on top of it. A simple gable is that matches much of the industrial forms along there. What it showed is that there would be shadows cast on neighbor property, round plain especially on the yard, if you will, until about 10 AM on the worst case day, that is December 1st. What I will tell you is a 25 foot tall tree, anywhere in between the building and our property line, but also cast about that same shadow. So that's part of the, it's, it's geometry. It's like math. I was trying to explain this to my 10-year-old and he freaked out. It was, it, it's all just math. It, it, the biggest thing about solar rights here in Atascadero is we're limited mainly to roof-mounted solar. So one of the great things is while we're casting a shadow on the ground at 10 AM, we're actually not casting any shadows on the roof of the adjacent homes because they're 10 feet up in the air and then pitched almost, uh, southwest. So what we really looked at that and it's a very minimal, um, solar invasion that we would be producing on, on any of the structures. It's only Exchange One until about 10 AM in December. So, uh, Office, uh, Office One didn't pose any at the maximum. So I hope that answers the, the, uh, questions. We, we did a geo-reference site model. I could show you, um, but, uh, anyways, I do want to say there's some grading that needs to be done. Uh, there was a question brought up previously about, uh, the relationship between, uh, the grocery store and the adjacent homes. Um, at worst case, there's about a five-foot difference. There's not a sound wall on the, uh, property beyond the basin. There is about a existing two-foot wall and another two-foot retaining wall proposed kind of back where the trucks do stop. The idea is there is no loading dock. There should be no backing up. Not saying there will not be any backing up, but there is the accommodation for a truck to come in and out through the site with as minimal disruption as possible. But that was really part of that, turning the site to a 45-degree angle and, uh, increasing the depth of where the truck should stop. So we think we're keeping with the specific plan. If you look at color and materials, if you look at the sort of types of places we're trying to maintain, we're very excited about being, um, community-oriented, being of place. We feel like the architecture is that, the landscape is that. Um, and, and hopefully we're excited. I'm excited not drive to Trader Joe's anymore, but actually having another quality grocery here in town. That's really, really, um, uh, fun for us. So I'm here to answer any more specific questions. I would like that Kellin and I have been back and forth with this. I, I'm just going to ask on the, the floor height. So the 16 foot is intended to be a second floor plate height. I think it's a great thing to do with the exchange buildings. I'm not sure it's necessary on the office buildings. If we do find that perfect office tenant, if MindBody wants to come up and take 60,000 square feet at three stories, they don't need the 15 feet. Get it a little bit lower than that actually. So I'd love to look at, at least considering that condition just on Exchange and not on the two rear office buildings. But, uh, we can accommodate one way or another. I just, I just think it's a better product and, and potentially less impact to the neighbors. So thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions. As, uh, as Patty said, we have a whole team. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. See. Just wanted to make a note on that. So when we get to that, okay. So why don't we go ahead now, uh, as I promised a few moments ago, let's have, uh, the rest of the public, any members who are wishing to speak, please come forward. And if you're on the webinar, raise your hand and we will get to all of you. Please, uh, let us know your name for the record and welcome for speaker.
Um, my name is Derek Williams. I'm with JD Design and Construction, the contractor for the project. You know, there was a couple of, uh, questions from council concerning, uh, hours of work and, um, I just wanted to address any of those concerns, uh, from our standpoint.
Okay. So we still have the applicant coming up. I didn't realize this. So my apologies. I don't, uh, what, why don't we wrap that up at the end? Okay. So it, it will notice if there's any other questions from the public and so hang on there. Glad you're here, Derek, and we will definitely get to you. All right. Thank you. All right. So anyone not with the applicant, we definitely want to hear from you. We'll hear from you again. Come on up to the podium. Go ahead and stand over there. Get in line. And if you're on the webinar, raise your hand on the phone, star nine. Welcome to our first speaker.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Terry McLean.
Would you move towards the microphone so we could hear you clearly? Perfect.
My question or thought on it was, is there any thought process given to the proximity of the north end of your project uh, on that park that we have as I guess it's our dream basin or whatever it is, but it's a park that comes out like to El Camino. And I realize it's a separate property from that, but it was, are going to be any impact from what you're doing over there on on this park-like area. Essentially, the way I look at it is we're paying, uh, HOA fees and all that to take care of that park. And if, if you're going to be causing us more work, then somebody needs to anticipate more pay. So this basically, yeah, I just have some questions on it.
Thank you, sir. I, and if, and if you, as you have questions, we'll take note of those and we'll answer them all when everyone's complete. Thank you. Next speaker.
There's some tall people up here.
Right?
First of all, thank you for the opportunity and for everybody staying late so we can get all this, um, open and transparent communication going. And Mr. Borbo.
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Susan Silverland. Hello Patty. And I say hello to Patty because we've talked numerous times over the, um, dealt the Miriposa buildings. But anyhow, thank you, Mr. Borbo, for asking such great questions. I really appreciate it. There were some things that you brought up that made me think even deeper. Um, first of all, you had asked, is there, um, was there residential in that area, um, in the eighties? And when we moved there in the eighties, there was a trailer park there on the corner across from Shore's, um, gas station, which served as a little place that you could buy milk and alfalfa hay, which was really great. But anyhow, the reason I'm here is because we are the, we are the two, we are one of the two houses on Obispo that has been there for 30 some years. And we have, um, originally when we moved there, our driveway was from El Camino Real that great, big long driveway all the way. So we've been there a number of years, 33 years as a matter of fact. So our concern then is our access that is a, um, a deeded access that we have that access. Now, when I was looking at the information booklet in the back, it does say that, um, that there will be a discussion and there will be a modification of our easement, but we haven't been connected, contacted. I haven't yet been contacted and our easement goes right through the middle of the amazing store. And I have been asking since the eighties to have a store. So thank you. And thanks for the outlet center too. We were really thrilled with that too. But, um, I just want to make sure that we have some kind of, not a guarantee, but did you guys know that that grocery store is sitting right on top, right in the middle? Our easement is right in the middle of that grocery store. But otherwise, everything looks wonderful and I love that it's being built by local people. How nice to have people who live here be a part of this and that it's not just some great big chain from Southern California that's coming in. And I appreciate your time on it. Um, we just need to get that, um, for our personal reasons, we need to get that, um, taken care of. Easement that is a deeded easement through there. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers? Come on up. Everybody get, get in line. No need to wait.
Good evening. Once again, Sierra Steel. Um, I do have a lot of questions for the developers and the builders and the planning department as well. This adventure began for me in 2017 when all I wanted to know was how tall Home Two was going to eventually be. I have been unable to find that answer until obviously it's already been built. It has continued. I have looked for minutes, agendas, even the agenda packet for this evening. I was unable to download from the website. Aside from communication issues, um, and questions, I would like to urge the governing members of this board to be aware of that and realize that none of the community has participated. We have been watching this development from the small information we've been getting to include incorrect notices that were reflected in the staff report. And at this time, if any movement is continued forward from tonight, I would also like conditions to be placed that as the project continues, it will come before City Council once again for any reviews and changes as just keeping up since last Friday, um, the presentation has changed and it's as residents and property owners, we're not being informed. Um, with that being said, I would just like to, um, read my public comment that I had submitted. I would like it make, like to make it known that the owners of this community have been silent battle with the city. This is undermining our bottom line. I am here on an urgent, time-sensitive manner regarding the Del Rio development and changes not included in the specific plan. While this is what brought me before you today, the real issue at hand is our city's information and compliance. I am pleased to see the staff report adjusted to reflect incorrect information being said to the community and owners. However, I address this with the planning department first on March 19th of this year. Incorrect notices continued while projects moved forward. The residents believe and trust the city to offer them protections as owners who are uniquely also in this situation, an asset, an asset, apologies, an asset that is being destroyed to feed our cash flow. On March 19th, I saw information. I was informed that the notice I received said that Amex would be three stories tall. And the height was to allow for additional industrial needs with ground floor operations only. In comes June 7th, more incorrect information with addition of mixed-use apartments that now infringe on property owners' rights while not adhering to guidance and general specific plans. Again, comes June 17th. With another incorrect notice being sent to residents, staffing shortages have been used as an excuse by this apartment.
Ms. Ms. Steel?
Yes.
Your time, your time is up. If I could ask you to wrap up in maybe 30 seconds and we do have your comments, uh, that we did receive.
Okay.
Wrap up in about 30 seconds. I'd appreciate it.
Um, due to the time-sensitive and availability of information for the residents and stakeholders of this community, I strongly urge no motions to be approved as permits and everything will be active the next morning with appeal procedures. Our books are not balanced. This is the end of our accounting cycle. You need to send it, this project back to be done correctly before it is brought before you. It never should have been placed onto the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steel. Uh, any other members of the public, please come on up. And if you're in the webinar and wish to speak, please raise your hand. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Osland, Business Owner Resident here in Atascadero. This project is very close to where I live. And, uh, first of all, the grocery store is very favorable because if you've ever been to their grocery stores, they actually have hot and cold, uh, food that you can get, which is a lot better for my wife and I than going to Taco Bell, which is going to be closer. So we're thrilled that we're getting an alternative, uh, that can serve as a to-go restaurant because our city is lacking in good, healthy meals. So this is at least one way to address, uh, the restaurant world. As far as the project goes, we're absolutely in favor of the project. There is a couple of concerns. And it's because our city has passed an ordinance, which is a great ordinance on doing retardant on trees now. So I think that we need to put in some height regulations that they have to maintain at a certain height. So they're not out of control naturally, being that we don't spray them anymore. And I believe we passed that a few months ago. And that would be my only concern on the trees going forward with what's planted and where on the landscaping. Typically, when a project is built with this scope, that, um, city requires a bond to make sure all of the infrastructure is done at one time. And then we go from there. So we're not left in the dark. So, you know, that's a natural incurring thing. And as far as the setbacks in the height go, um, I think it's a great, um, complimentary uh, project to the hotel and also to, to what's going in on the other corners. And widening the road would be great. So we don't have the traffic to get on, uh, backed up to get on the freeway going northbound. And if that could be somehow incorporated at the same time with the city, because I know the retaining wall across the streets already been put in. But we need to make that right turn lane. You know, we're going to be backed up and then I will have trouble getting home. So those are the concerns that I have on there. But this project hands down is great. I have, uh, popped into a couple of the planning commission and DRC meetings on this. And a couple of things that we can note is they did change some of the design to accommodate quieter areas for the neighborhood. Uh, that was at one of the meetings. They did change it for more pedestrian access and a nicer feel. So I think they've hit all the points really, really well. And as long as the residents behind that area still have some privacy, with maybe no balconies or a different setback that the architect could take, I think we're in great shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers, please come forward, get lined up. I'm standing, I hand in the webinar. I'll get to you. Yes, sir.
My name's Paul Baye, a 33-year Atascadero resident.
Lift up the mic a little bit, maybe.
I just wanted to mention that, um, I've lived here for 33 years and seen a lot of new development on El Camino Real, commercial buildings, and they all look nice. And I really didn't give it much thought about the impact it give on people because it just happens. Until the Del Rio project came along and how it was approved and all of a sudden the developer got this two and a half acre parcel north of it and said, oh, and they just added some amendments to the, to the plan and nobody really knew about it. I didn't know about it. All of a sudden, there's a 30-foot building next to these people living on Via Viento. It's the developer saying, oh, well, we have 67 feet from here to their house. Well, their house is 20 feet. The 25-foot easement was already there. So there's 22 feet. That's, they give 22 feet on 11 acres. So the people sitting in their backyard, they're looking up like the top of that city and there's a building there. It used to be a skyline. They could give 100 feet on 11 acres, but no, they, they think they're 67 feet, which is actually 22 feet is sufficient. The shadow that doesn't touch their house in December, it's in their backyard. December, it's cold. I want to step out on the patio at nine o'clock in the morning. Well, there's, there's no sun at nine o'clock in the morning because the building has a shadow. That's, doesn't, I'm not even talking about the solar effect. Without the solar, it's still, it's your sun. There's a big building blocking it. It's not fair. It's just not right. And especially that there's no communication between the city. How everything is there's no communication between the city. How everything is found out after the fact, like my, like Sierra said, Home One. It's built, then she gets to answer the question. And that's about all I have to say. I just think this needs further consideration. It needs more communication from the city to the residents to when things are being built to just let things go through. The developers say, we want to be part of the community, but they won't talk to us. They won't say, hey, what do you think about this? So the residents could say, well, we don't like this. Can we do a compromise? No, there's no compromise. You get your 22 feet. That's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. I do see someone on the webinar, so if we could bring on Catherine Love.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Love.
Hi. So yes, my name is Catherine or Cat Love. I'm a resident of Otaskodaro. My husband also owns a local architecture firm and I would just like to say first, I'm thrilled about the market coming in. The ability to have another market and support a local business and such a great market as well. I would love to see that open as soon as possible. And then I also just wanted to give compliments to the design team as well as the city. Setbacks are always a big point of discussion and I was very pleasantly surprised with the setbacks at both of the sides of the property. And so I just wanted to give compliments to those teams as well and hopefully welcome the market soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Anyone else wishing to speak? If you're in, in chambers, go ahead and come up to the podium. If you're in the webinar, raise your hand on the phone, star nine. I am not seeing anyone, so I gonna hang on a moment. Anybody, anybody? Luke, do we have anyone on the phone? No. All right. Last chance webinar, raise the hand. Anyone here want to come to the podium? All right, I am seeing them. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to, to council and staff. So, uh, let's see, I want to, I've got notes here. So Mr. Unclane had talked about the drainage basin and any impact and fees to be able to take care of the park and just making sure all that's maintained. And I know we did talk about an HOA, but maybe Ms. Blaisen, you could speak to that.
Sure. So the, the park as described is a detention basin for the residents of Colony Homes. It's also designed as a park feature. I believe they have some benches and a table in there and some features like that. It's right along El Camino. I know they probably already get some pass by traffic and people that stop by the park area. It's not anticipated that people of this development would be using that park necessarily. The development has been designed with some plaza and open space features. That is a private park and detention basin, and so they don't have rights to go use that park. The Apple Valley Park is a partially public park and is across the freeway for their use. Certainly, the residents could add some signage. I don't know if any signage is out there now. I'm describing it as a, as a private park and no trespassing. We don't anticipate these residents to use that park and that's not the intent.
Okay, thank you. And then I didn't get all the last names, but I got first names. Susan was asking about the modification of the deeded easement and, you know, going through the middle of the grocery store. Could you speak to that?
Yes, we are aware of the easement. We've added condition 14 to the resolution that addresses modifications that easement. They do have a legal easement. And so any modification to that easement does need the approval of both parties to do so. And we would not be legally able to issue building permits or anything that obstructed that easement until modification that was approved by both parties was made.
Okay. And I see Ms. Wieland, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I would like to speak to that. Susan Silva, I've actually spoken with her on the phone. That's the first time we've met in person. But yes, we have already discussed her 10-foot wide access easement. And it is deeded and we actually have prepared the documents and she had agreed to allow us to move it, to give her full, full access. And so we just haven't finalized that, but she will have improved access across the project paved across to El Camino.
Okay, thank you. And a few individuals on Ms. Steel and I believe Paul had mentioned communication with the city. You know, feeling like maybe there wasn't enough access or the transparency or could you kind of go through the process and how the, you know, how this has been made available to the public over the time and how this project has evolved and the access that's been made available?
Sure. Yeah. So the project has kind of followed our standard process. It, it has gone through three public hearings, so design review committee, planning commission, and now council. Prior to each meeting, we do have a legal requirement to notice the neighborhood and place an ad in the paper as well. We also go out and physically post notices at the project site on brightly colored yellow, yellow paper. It's a large site. And so sometimes that can get lost. I think we try and do three or four on a, on a site this big and, and in safe spots where the neighbors can pull out as well. With all projects, you know, we, we don't go knocking on doors. Our neighborhood notice really is sort of the first time that the city sort of does that outreach to the neighborhood. But anything submitted to the city is part of public record. So if people reach out to us, we make plans available to them. And we make information available. I, I understand the frustrations with sometimes getting things off our website. We have really large agenda packets. And we hear from a lot of people that they, it's hard, it's hard to get off. I think sometimes you have to wait five or 10 minutes for those to download. And it is difficult, but we are always available at City Hall with a hard copy to go over. In this case, based on some neighbor concerns, we were requested to go out to the neighborhood to actually view the property and understand the impacts. And so staff did go out there for an onsite meeting with some of the neighbors. We also, because of the concerns with how large the agenda packet was, we did offer and we delivered some printed staff reports to some of the neighbors as well in this case. So it's kind of our standard city, city process. We don't generally have neighborhood meetings just for commercial development throughout the city.
Thank you. See, Mr. Osland asked about bonded. I don't know if you just mentioned or asked about it, but yes, the, the improvements will be, will be bonded for that. The height of the trees, I think that is something we'll talk about, but you know, Kelly, have we, have you had those conversations with the applicants in terms of whether it's picking the type of species that would be the appropriate height that doesn't then start casting the shadow or the required pruning of them? What, what is the plan for that?
Yeah. So in, in sort of contrast to sort of the, the growth limiter that some shopping centers put on the trees, I think they out, the, I call it the outlet mall still, the grocery outlet site uses the growth inhibitor on their trees. And their trees really don't provide shading for the parking lot. And we really want to get to a level where we shade the parking lot. So, you know, it's always staff's preference to just choose the right species. Obviously, trees can be pruned. But we do actually add conditions on projects now to allow trees to grow to their sort of more natural height and spread rather than being artificially stunted. I think if we were concerned about solar shading and landscaping, it would be good to add a specific condition that addresses that, just so it's very clear. And then we will work with the landscape architect to choose species that are appropriately sized and can be pruned while still maintaining some level of shade for the, the asphalt and paved areas.
Okay. Let's see. And then we also had a Paul had mentioned the, the two and a half acre parcel that, that no one knew about. It, it hasn't been part of the specific plan, but it has always been zoned, commercial retail. Is that correct?
Correct. And it still will not be part of the specific, within the specific plan boundary. So it still will be an additional parcel, the specific plan, the way that we design specific plans, which is sometimes different than the way other cities can do specific plans, is we do our specific plans sort of limited to applicants and property owners that have sort of signed on to that application. There is another method where you can do much larger areas as a city to sort of create a mini little zoning ordinance and form-based code for areas. So this was based on ownership when the specific plan came through. We knew that commercial parcel was there and that's why we had conditions in the specific plan that they provide connected access and some level of coordination between those two development sites. But it was not within the specific plan boundary and it will not be after this approval either.
Again, the underlying zoning of commercial retail has always been there. That's correct. Okay. All right. I think we got through the questions. All right. So now bringing it back to council. Let's heard questions and some deliberation. And particularly if we've got any questions from the applicant, any clarification that we need. Mayor Potem Newsome.
I don't know if this has already been asked earlier this evening, but has the applicant received any prior noise complaints on this project or other projects they've been on? Looking for more form.
Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, my name is Clint Pierce. I'm with McDonough Enterprises. We're the developer. So I know I'm getting too close. So I was, I, I just learned of this, this letter that was signed, I guess, yesterday. I just saw it today and it took me by surprise because I have, have never heard of a, a noise complaint or a complaint of working out of the hours that are allowed by the city. So I asked both of my contractors. So N K Builders, they built the Home Two Suites for us. And they're currently working on Del Rio Retail on the corner with Taco Bell and the adjacent retail building. Tim Tillman, the owner, he gave me a statement this afternoon that he's never received a neighbor complaint or a complaint from the city, whether it's a police department or any of the planning or building. He's never received a complaint. I also asked Derek Williams with JW Design, who are building the homes at the end of Mirasol, the same question, have you ever had any complaints or worked outside the allowed hours? And he gave me a statement again this afternoon, no, no complaints from the neighbors or from the city. So I'm unaware of any complaints. And the question was asked earlier, if we would commit to working within the allowed hours and requirements of the city. And it's absolutely yes. I mean, you, you have our commitment that we will absolutely abide by all of those rules.
Thank you. Thank you. That's my only question. Councilmember Warbeau.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I did have a question for the applicant architect and a question for staff. The, for staff, for Kelly, the architect brought up the issue regarding condition number 29 regarding the 16-foot minimum first floor space. And he brought up how if that wasn't required, you know, it could lower the overall height of the buildings. At least in particular, those two buildings that are close to the northern edge of this. What is the, I think you mentioned in the staff report, but I'm forgetting, what is the, our purpose in asking for a 16-foot minimum on the first floor?
Sure. So the exchange buildings in particular are designed to be like a light industrial artisan type space could provide sort of for some, you know, jobs producing uses. And those types of uses typically need a larger, taller ceiling heights to accommodate equipment that they might have. For example, brewery equipment, I think sits at, you know, 12, 10 to 12 feet. And then, you know, you have the pedestrian access around it. And so you really need sort of that 15-foot ceiling height to be able to accommodate that. So if we want those types of uses on the site, then we do need to make sure that we maintain that ceiling height. Staff is less concerned on the office buildings. The condition is written to include those office buildings, which would allow some of those uses, you know, to maybe be in those buildings at some point in time. But those really are designed as office buildings and we're less concerned about the ceiling height than those.
And what is the typical off height, first floor height in an office building? Is it 10 feet, 12 feet?
Yeah, I believe around 12 feet is pretty standard. And we're seeing, you know, nine to 10 feet for residential uses at this point, especially as units get smaller, people like that volumetric space.
Because I'm asking relative to office one and exchange one. Exchange two is far enough away. That doesn't seem related to be an issue in any manner. And this question for the architect regarding exchange one, I hesitate to ask this question because this has been through the planning commission and the design review committee. But I'm just looking at this layout here and wondering why exchange one isn't perhaps oriented 90 degrees the other way. So it'd be farther away from the, the northern property line.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, there's just been a lot of back and forth on the site between the engineering, between the vehicular circulation, that the orientation, it's also, they're still, the idea is there's still people trying to sell something in there. So that street orientation, a, a frontage facing El Camino is very, very important to the livelihood. Think of Jobella down the street or the little brewery, I forget its name, Colony Mash, that sort, same sort of development. Where the, the artisanal type of uses do the best is where they still get street frontage. So that's what we're trying to do with exchange one.
Okay. There was not, not any other physical reason like the drainage base and anything like that driving that orientation?
Yes, there is. The drainage basin, the site circulation, there, there's a number of reasons. So and council member, ma'am, maybe I'm not quite understanding you. I also believe if you turn that 90, you'd be looking right into the backyards of your adjacent residential leases.
Yeah, well, you'd be farther away. But okay, thank you. No, you, you, that's clear enough. Another question for staff, a neighbor that brought up the issue of the park, and I know the mayor followed up on that. But in looking at, there's on one of these slides, I think in your presentation, it, it showed some of these features as they're called, like the outdoor space. And what I would call the courtyard of office one. And there's some of these plazas. But if, if I had little children, I probably would get in the little stroller and walk them down to the, the thing at Via Vento, like the neighbor mentioned. It brings to my mind though, the question of these features in terms of if, if it's an office building or it's had offices on the top, then, you know, having an outdoor space where you take a break, that looks great. But if it's residential, there, there's no, there's no grass in here for the kids to play on, so to speak. And is that, was that taken into consideration relative to the option of residential versus second and third floor offices?
Sure. It's always taken into consideration for a certain degree. We know that a lot of state laws are pushing for higher density mixed use development. And with that just comes reduced green open space per se. But also we're finding that the types of people that then are attracted to live in these types of developments are not necessarily looking for the larger sort of open yard areas. Yeah, it's, it's not ever sort of going to be perfect. I'm sure it's a very attractive to walk by their, their lovely grass basin and hang out there a little bit. It's certainly not necessarily something we can control, but hope through, hopefully through signage, you know, from their HOA, it will limit honest people that, you know, walk by and they'll, they'll go over to Apple Valley instead.
Maybe they could make a contribution to the HOA or something. But anyway, well, thank, thank you for those answers. Appreciate it.
Right, Councilmember Fun.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. With regard, we, we, and I want to thank Mr. Pierce for his comments or response to the neighbors' noise complaints and taking those concerns. I just, the city process to make a noise complaint with a code review and, and, and for, I know our code review is, is, has been very backed up. And because we are in a staffing transition right now. So is there, I would be interested in the applicant addressing, if neighbors find that construction is occurring before 7:00 AM and that noise is bothersome, what's the most expeditious place for them to call to, to make sure that those who can control that activity will do so?
Sure. I think one of the best things for a construction related complaint is to actually just call our building department. So we're all downstairs and the main number for City Hall, 461-5000 will get you to our front counter staff that can transfer that call to our building department. We generally have community development staff in the office all the time. And our building inspectors are obviously very aware and knowledgeable about all of the construction projects going on and they will be able to reach out immediately.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. The process for the RDU resolving the balance between The process with regard to resolving the balance between solar shading issues and landscaping that ensures some privacy, particularly along the northern border. That's going to be a balance in working with the neighbors. Can you describe what the, what that process might be? I mean, it's, I hate to have something have to come back all the way to city council to have, make sure that the developer and the neighbors are working out the best possible resolution of those trade offs.
Yeah, I think if the council wants sort of required developer neighbor participation in a process, then at a minimum, you know, DRC would be the body that that would need to go back to.
And if this had to go back to DRC, what kind of delays does that place on the project? On their ability to move forward with other aspects of the project? While resolving that, you know, the trade offs with regard to, you know, what landscaping is used and how high it is and that kind of thing along those perimeters.
That might, and that might depend on how that condition is written and what the council wants to see. If it's solely landscape, that may not have any significant delay on the project if they're able to move forward with buildings, development, and all of their other site improvements. If it's solely just the landscape at that border, perhaps that's the item that you stick that condition to, and then it won't create a substantial impact. But then again, reflecting on that landscape, it is, is a competition between adequate screening, adequate shading for the property, and then not too much shading for those properties. So where does that lie? And so it is, it is a discussion where some neighbors are going to want more landscapes, some want less. Yeah, it's not going to be easy.
Right, okay. And then it sounds like there would be some, some challenges if we put a condition with regard to the the height of external additions to on exchange one. Is there? Is the, I'm looking for, is there the expeditious way to make sure that those solar shading issue, if, if you go up, if you use the opportunity to have additional height on that building and it does create additional shading issues for the, the properties to have some discussion with the neighbors about some way to resolve that impact. Without, as councilmember Bo describes, creating a hundred thousand dollar solution to a, you know, thousand dollar problem.
I think if we were to add a condition to the resolution, the solar shading analysis that the applicant provided did already include a low pitched sort of gable roof on the exchange one building. And so if we wanted to write a condition to not exceed anything that was shown, you know, in the solar study, I think we'd want to hear from the designer sort of what that roof pitch was so that we could allow that at a minimum. And then anything that might be raised above that within, that would increase solar shading would have to come back for review.
Sure. And that could, if necessary, that would go back to DRC, right?
That could go back at any level you desire.
Okay. That, that sounds like a good pathway there. Okay. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daris.
Thank you. All right. Well, first I'd like to compliment RM on the, on the design of the project. I think you guys, I really like what you've done and the placement of most of the buildings. I've liked what you've done with the corner. I think that's going to be a really good focal point for, for this project coming in, especially off of Del Rio and the highway there. We talked a little bit earlier about landscaping with respect to phasing and whatnot, you know, the main building being way, way back in the project from El Camino, I think it is important that a lot of the landscaping along the border be done just to make it look at least, you know, as complete as it can be, even though we're going to be phasing on it. When I first saw the site plan and I saw the big, the main building, my first thought was truck access. And as a former truck driver, I'm looking at this going, there is no way, but there's, I don't get the scale to it. So when I actually realized the scale, okay, you can get a big truck back there. And I do like the parallel, sort of parallel parking that you've got there. I think it's easier for the truck driver. And like you say, most of these trucks have lift. So I like that concept. You don't have to hear the beep, beep, beep backing up most of the time. So I am, I'm pretty pleased with that. The, the, the one concern I do have is with the exchange one building. We've talked a lot about that. I know that you, the solar study, I think is really good that you've been able to provide that. I think even with, even if it was to show, at least from my perspective, even if it was to show that the shadow was not touching the neighbor's property at all at any time during the year. I, my feeling is that a three story building, even at that distance, could potentially feel a little bit overbearing. And, and I, and I say this in with, in comparison to the large building that's at the back, being at 35 feet high, but 40, I think it's 42 feet off the property line, this one potentially 45 feet and 47 feet from, from the neighbor or from the, from the residential property line. You know, it's comparing apples and oranges, maybe I'm not sure, but my, I would, I think it might look nicer, it might be less sort of like maybe a compromise if, if that, if that building, the exchange building could be tiered from, you know, the second and third floor be set back from the property line. If there is any shadows, then it's not going to touch it. I think that would solve any solar issues because, because you might, you still have a height. But the second and third floor would be further off of the property line. So that was, that was, that's my, my two cents on, on the, on the height of the building. I think it might be a good compromise. Oh, and then of course, the, the windows and balconies and whatnot facing the north side. Certainly we want to, to limit sort of the perception of being, having your backyard being peered into. Oh, and with that being said, the other building being 35 feet and maybe a little bit closer to the property line, there's probably likelihood of no windows there. It is rotated at 45. So there, that issue doesn't even exist. But the exchange one, even though it's a much smaller building, I, I can really see that as, as a, as a concern for the neighbors. And I would like to suggest that a stepped second and third floor for that to at least as a compromise. And I think it'll help. And it might even add to some architectural, maybe curb appeal on that. But, and I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd actually ask for, let's see, I think it was Scott, if you would come back up. There he is. So two questions I have. You had mentioned that you wanted one of the conditions to reflect, you know, a second floor height, first floor height. Could you clarify that? Because I want to make sure staff gets that and we understand what you're talking about.
Sure, sure. I, I think staff and I are on the same page. I absolutely fine with the 16 foot second floor finished floor height for the exchange buildings, but I'd like to consider removing that condition from not to office buildings. Does that make sense to everybody?
So the office buildings, you don't want the first floor to be more than the 16 feet. You just want the exchange buildings to have the first story be a 16 foot.
Staff really wants that and I'm happy to go along with it.
Are you talking a second floor that's 16?
No, no mention a second floor. We're just defining the floor as the height as opposed to a ceiling, which is, well, really hard to define some.
Don't define a floor as a height. I'm not an architect. That does not make any sense to me.
Kelly yelled at me already for this. I promise, Mayor, it's not.
Okay, so second, oh, second finished floor. I see what you're seeing of the elevation in multi-story buildings. So you would like that instead of multi-story buildings, just to say the multi-story exchange buildings. Okay. And does, if you stay there, please. Does staff, have you been in conversation? You, you agree with that?
We, we've not had a super long conversation about it, but I think our, our biggest concern is for the exchange buildings and the types of uses that that could attract. We, I'll let Phil chime in if he has some major concerns about the office buildings, but I believe those are not as high on our concern level for use.
Well, I will say that the, the hope is to maintain flexibility and land uses for all of the buildings. Looking back at the original intent of this whole center, it was really supposed to be a jobs based center. And I think if we eliminate that 16 foot, that's probably okay, but there should be some limitation. If you end up with a 10 foot round floor, finished floor in there, I think the land uses are going to become ever so narrower. And I think keeping a flexibility is what everybody wants. And so maybe there's a compromise in there. A better number that works for both the applicant and considering ultimate flexibility and land use in those buildings in the future.
What would you propose, Director?
I'd like to hear from the architect as to what that compromise would be. What, what are they after? I mean, maybe it's not the 16, maybe we get down and we're, you know, at 14. Is that going to be something that's going to work and and do that? And then again, building height isn't as big of an issue in those buildings either. They're much further away from the adjacent residential.
Absolutely. Something in that 12 to 14 foot range seems much more appropriate. Again, with the potential of maybe getting a, a larger three story, single tenant. Amazon's coming our way or whatever it be. It's just, we want, we want the ability to maintain the three stories that's envisioned in, in that zone. So.
Yes, yes. All right. I heard 14 foot then. Here we are.
Okay. So that would be changing the 16, 16 foot for exchange only and then 14 foot on office. Is that what I'm hearing, Director? And, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And then Scott, if you could let us know on that exchange one building, what, how do you see that currently being, you know, councilmember Daris said, you know, oh, maybe that's something we, you know, that you tear up or you get a little more. What is, what is the, the plan there?
Honestly, it's a, we're still in development on that. So what I can guarantee is what you see would be the worst case scenario, which does take into account further than minimum required setbacks and the, the potential to try to not invade people's privacy. That, that was intentional thought given to the layout. Councilmember Diaz has some great ideas and I, I really, where I struggle is, as you well know, there's some structural gymnastics that come into that building. So requiring an upper floor setback adds huge costs to what is intended to create maybe a pure jobs building. If that is, if that is a brewery with an office above, we are potentially adding the cost to create a job center here in that building. Again, I want to look at the context that's directly across the street and it's just a straight up wall right on the property line. So I sympathize with the neighbors. We, we have tried to address the issue. I, I don't dislike your suggestion, but I'm not paying to build the building either, got to be honest. So I just, I would hate for that to reduce the overall viability, viability of the project.
Understand. And that gives us a good perspective. Thank you. All right. Any other council questions? Okay. So from that, what I am seeing in terms of changes that we would want to be making is I believe Ms. Whelan had said that no balconies on the north facing of exchange one, that that was okay, working with staff on tree species so that, you know, solar shading does, you know, is, is prohibited. It's getting late, is prevented. All right. We would also be looking at making sure that the exchange one, that the low pitched roof that is in the modeling, that whatever does get built would be at most that. And ideally a better scenario, but that would be the maximum. I'm seeing a correction or a clarification coming. All right. Please do.
Stay, stay seated over here.
I don't know why you keep going back over there.
I'm just scared of the word pitch. What I did is build that model at the highest allow wall height and the highest allowed roof height. So I don't even know if that's a two and three quarter and 12 roof. What, what, what we'd be happy to, 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 I think, arrange with is not to exceed the height shown in the model. But using the word pitch scares me a little bit.
And I think that that works. Do you know the height of the top of the gable? Okay. And then we would be looking at the 16 foot for the, for the exchange and then 14 foot for the office. Okay. All right. So I think what we've been able to do is mitigate some of the privacy concerns. Certainly with the tree species, looking at that, trying to make sure that we protect as much of the solar as we can and ensuring that whatever does get built, that it doesn't exceed what has been shown in the modeling. I am, I am hesitant to put requirements that could make this project cost more and more money when I don't see I, I, from, from what I see is every measure has been taken to protect as best can be. Now, I understand that when you're living somewhere and suddenly a commercial building comes next to you, that might not be ideal. The thing is, it has been zoned commercial for decades. And something is bound to go in there. And so sometimes we buy property and something next to us isn't built out as it could be. And then we're surprised 10 years later and, and I understand that. But what happens is those, those things do eventually get built and they have the right to build that. Now, yes, we need to look at things and I'm pleased that we're being able to address some, some issues here. But I think to put undue restrictions and burdens upon this particular property, I'm very hesitant of doing that because prices are continuing to increase, things are not getting cheaper. And this is something that is a benefit to our entire community. So we need to weigh all of these things together. With that, I will look to my colleagues for their input.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I also, before I go too far on, I want to thank Mr. Pierce and the operators of Valley Fresh for investing in our community. You know, being willing to do so. And it takes a lot of money, time and effort to at, you know, put at risk to try to bring one of these things to conclusion. Overall, I mean, we asked a lot of tough questions up here. Overall, I'm, I'm satisfied. You know, that this is a good, a good project that's good for the community and we try to address neighboring concerns as the mayor has noted. And so I won't belabor the point. I agree with what the mayor said and I'd be happy to make a motion that we can further discuss, but that make a motion that we adopt the draft resolution with the changes indicated by the mayor.
Laura, do we need to pause and read condition language?
We do. We need to have you guys approve with the actual condition language. So.
Okay, so what the mayor discussed was not clear enough to?
We are, I'm almost done writing them and then we can, Laura can read them or we can put them on the screen.
Because it is actual conditions changing the resolution we have.
Would it help if we took say a five minute break?
I was wondering whether it would be a good time for us to hear the other councilmembers' comments.
We can certainly do that. I'm also thinking it's, it's been after us a while and we still have another item. So why don't we take, it's 9:29. Why don't we come back at 9:35 and we will finish up?
And we will finish up.
So what did you hop in the car?
All right, let's see. I have received notice that our website is down. Everything is going to happen tonight that can. So if you happen to be on YouTube, you are on channel twenty, you are watching this virtually, I'm so glad you're able to. If you're wanting to log into Zoom and you aren't already here, you're wanting to call in, let me once again give you that information. The phone number is six, six, nine, nine hundred, six, eight, three, three. Once again, that is six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And then when you do call in, you'll have a meeting ID that you need to to plug in and that is eight, eight, nine, two, three, four, seven, nine, zero, one, eight. And one more time, that meeting ID is eight, eight, nine, two, three, four, seven, nine, zero, one, eight. Okay, so we came back from a break and are pulling together the changes to the conditions and I believe we're going to get those online and Councilmember Dara has one that he wanted to bring up.
Yes, we talked about landscaping. So I'd like to add that the completion of Phase One, that there is landscaping along the perimeter of Del Rio and El Camino. And to, and to that extent, if it's were allowed, I can, I'm comfortable with the applicant working with staff on what that extent is, but I think it's helpful to to dress up the property since the main building in particular is going to be so far setback, but landscaping on the perimeter at the completion of Phase One.
I think my concern, maybe the applicant could speak to this, my concern would be like if you don't have retail, you know, two, let's see, because the other retail five, I think. So you'd have like retails, one, two, three and four that need to be constructed. And if you're requiring the landscaping, you could then have a situation where you're coming in to construct.
Well, that's what I'm saying to the, that's what I'm saying to the extent. I mean, in some areas, maybe you can't, but I think to whatever extent is not going to impact having to tear it out or get it messed up. But I think it's like along, like the corner, the corner of the, where the Del Rio and El Camino meet and there's some areas where landscaping can be placed without an issue.
Let's see, see if Ms. Whelan can speak to that.
As long as there is, as long as the language allows for practical flexibility around the future construction.
Right. And that's why I would like to make sure it's into that, the applicant can work with staff on, on how that is. But I just, I just don't want to see mounds of dirt and, you know, and a chain link fence because it's not developed at, on that, at the street edge, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, understood.
Thank you.
That was, that was my purpose when I brought it up, but I would like to say that, you know, landscaping along the Del, Del Rio and El Camino frontages, as long as it doesn't interfere with future construction.
Sounds reasonable.
I, Madam Mayor, on that, on that point, is it also reasonable to expect that the landscaping along the interior perimeter next to the neighborhood be completed at this point?
I believe.
So the fence, because we've got Valley Fresh, Exchange One, Exchange Two, Retail Five.
So you're saying that the north facing fence?
Yeah, the north facing fence in particular, I would think that that it's also a concern for those areas where, you know, on the backside of the, of the market, where the landscaping is an important sound buffer and privacy buffer and transition from the commercial development to the neighborhood. And so, and it takes time for that landscaping to grow in. So I would like to see those. You know, it's not a beautification for the community, but it's rather an honor, honoring the concerns of the neighborhood to get that in.
Valley Fresh and Retail Five are, are estimated to be in the first phase. So I would, I would think that you'd be planning on that landscaping in that first phase.
Yes, that's correct. Okay.
And would that also include the north fence?
I was just going to ask that. So the north fence along the, the neighbors there, what would be the plan in terms of, would it, even if, say, Office One isn't built yet? Could you, and again, wording would be flexible, right? Might that be reasonable to put in that landscaping?
Yes, I believe so. We've spoken with the contractor initially on that, but we haven't resolved just what would be safe to plant along the north fence up next to Office One. Okay. So not sure on that one, but definitely wanting to get those trees growing for the privacy. Certainly closer to El Camino where Exchange One will go in, then that would be finished. Okay.
Okay. All right. So if we could have staff bring up the wording of the now five changes to the conditions. It's opening. We're working on it. Yes. Anybody remember those old Mervin's commercials, open, open, open?
Mervin's, now that's going back.
Yes, I just dated myself. I think you dated us all. I used to work at Mervin's. All right, so let's, so if we read through these, condition number nine, twenty nine is to amended to read, second finished floor height elevation of the exchange buildings shall be a minimum of sixteen feet from the finished floor elevation of the ground floor. Could you, thank you, second finished floor elevation of the office building shall be a minimum of fourteen feet from the finished floor elevation of the ground floor. Then we'd be adding a condition to read, no balcony shall be permitted on the north elevation of Exchange Building One. Number three would be landscaping along the northern portion of the property shall be limited to species that will not grow to a natural height that will impact solar exposure on adjacent residential properties. Number four, architectural roof features on the Exchange One building that are above that shown in the solar modeling. That is thirty five foot occupied building height with gable roof peak at forty feet may only be added if it can be shown that solar shading onto adjacent residential properties will not be increased. Number five, perimeter landscaping along Del Rio and El Camino Real Frontage, in addition to landscaping along the north property line, shall be installed with Phase One of the development to the extent feasible without necessitating removal for future construction subject to the approval of the Community Development Director. Everybody.
I have a question on that, on number five, just because I have, I mean, originally brought this up, but I am concerned that we not oppose an unreasonable cost. So I don't know if there's a level at which I want staff to be able to go, okay, we're not going to make you do that if it turns out that, you know, doing it and running the irrigation to them or whatever is going to raise the costs substantially. I just want staff to be able to be reasonable because I don't want to impose unnecessary additional costs on.
I think that's what it says, to the extent feasible.
Yeah. And that's kind of my question is that, is this giving the Community Development Director enough latitude to go, yeah, we're not going to require something that's going to cost them an arm and a leg, you know, more than it would otherwise cost them.
Do we need to put financially feasible? Director, can you speak to that? Do you see it plenty of flexibility in here that were, that are, the intention of council and the, what's best for the development are being captured?
Yes. And in addition to that, it's so noted, the, the comments from council tonight, which are into the record that we want to be able to work with the applicant for financial feasibility. But in addition to implementing these, these conditions, so.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I think Councilmember Borbo, you were going to?
Yes, I move.
I would like one just quick point of clarification with the added height on the commercial retail parcel to allow the gable roof. I just want to make sure that we do add two findings to the resolution to make sure that that additional height meets all of our code requirements. So if I could read the findings and then we could add those to the resolution, will that work, Laura? So the finding would be that the, we would add two findings to the approval. One finding would be that the additional height provides architectural interest and adds to a varied roof line. And the other finding would be that the added features will not block solar access to adjoining properties.
So those, those findings are being added along with these five conditions?
Correct.
Right.
So with that, I would say I move that council adopt the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit with the five additional conditions or amended conditions as noted here on the screen and the two, two findings just read by staff.
And the change to, from eighty two to ninety two?
Yes, change from eighty two to ninety two units and the conditions are favorable.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Dara's. Councilmember Funk, did you have deliberation?
Yes, if, if I might, I just, I'm comfortable with the motion. What I want to do is acknowledge for, you know, our community members who have been here and participating that it is hard when, when, as a project of this magnitude is going to go through some changes. And so it's hard to know, it, you know, every time you hear about it, something is different. And that's because it's going through a process that involves public input, both from members of the public and, and for those of us elected or appointed to be of service. And so the project does change over time in response to those comments and concerns. And that can be frustrating because the answers change, but it is ultimately directed at having something that, that serves the community. And, and I'd echo a comment that the mayor made earlier that it's, it's hard if you're living next to a property that is zoned for commercial use, which happens a lot in a Tascadero and hasn't yet been developed to its full capability. It's hard to realize that, yeah, someday that's going to happen. And that person also has a right to pursue. And that person also has a right to pursue development of the property, just as, you know, we all have on our own. So I appreciate the folks, you know, the comments here. I think we've tried to be responsive to that and I'm comfortable with the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo and a second by Councilmember Dara's. Roll call, please.
Just really quick, so I can clarify, I apologize, but Councilmember Borbo had just mentioned approval of the conditional use permit. Want to make sure it also includes the tentative parcel map and the environmental impact report in the motion.
Yes.
Perfect.
In the second.
And the second.
As well.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much for being thorough. We're going through a lot tonight, and so I know you've got to keep us on track. So I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilmember Warpo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dara's.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Potemnusam.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
All right, now let's see, this next item should go quite quickly. Thank you very much for all of you being here. We're very, very excited to have you investing here in Atascadero.
Good luck with the project.
Okay. All right, we have got a very short item left. It is a management report, something we've talked quite a bit about already. The Integrated Waste Management Authority amended and restated joint powers agreement. And this will be our deputy city manager, City Clerk Laura Christensen.
So if I skip the PowerPoint, are you okay with that?
Totally.
It's still uploading. Okay, so we've talked quite a lot about the changes to the IWMA. Back in November, we had approved an amendment to the current JPA. And at that time discussed that we would need to bring forward additional amendments or there was discussion about a restated and amended JPA. Just really quickly, in case anyone is still listening and they're, they have no idea what we're talking about. The Integrated Waste Management Authority is a joint powers authority that was created by the seven cities in the county, as well as the, the county of Slow to take care of all of solid waste regulations in the region. And just, and basically to assist all of the agencies in being compliant with state regulations. Back at the end of 2021, the county did notify the IWMA that they were withdrawing from the JPA, which then caused all of the agencies that were a part of the JPA, which included the seven cities and all of the CSDs, to have to amend the JPA for some regulatory purposes in order to continue along as the JPA with the county leaving. And also to address some of the issues that had come out during some of the discussions with the county leaving, including a super majority provision that was in there. So those changes were made in an amendment. And then staff from the IWMA and from some of the agencies got together to discuss going forward with new amendments. During that discussion, well, let me back up really quick. And, and part of all of that, and then the amending all of the seven cities, did resolutions of continuation, basically the intent to continue as part of the IWMA, but with some conditions associated with that. Some of those being that the IWMA's purpose to be basically state regulations and pushing, you know, not pushing forward, but helping the agencies to comply with state regulations and not really going above and beyond that. So not creating additional regulations on our county that aren't coming down from state or federal agencies. And, you know, also to make sure that the IWMA was being considerate of the differences across the region and, you know, was being prudent in decisions that were being made and, you know, in expenditures, that type of stuff that at the time, there wasn't a permanent executive director. So fast tracking, getting a permanent executive director and, you know, making sure that there was a timeline of notice that would give at least six months notice in the event that anyone else wanted to withdraw from the JPA. Before you now is the amended and restated that came from that group that came together to talk about it. It does have the addition of section seven, which is called expressed limitation of power. So this expressly limits the authority's regulatory and ordinance power to stamp state mandated legislation only. It removes the Board of Supervisors from the IWMA governing board. There's withdrawal and solution that's in section 15 that provides for a six month notice. There are new recitals to include some of the historical context and the key pieces of legislation, AB 341, AB 1826, and SB 1383 that have come down since the IWMA's creation in 1994. And then there's provisions that have been included that address the special districts. The special districts used to be part of the JPA as an MOA, what, and that was managing two documents now that's all been sort of merged into one. So the JPA has to be created by the, by the seven cities. But now we've sucked, not sucked in, but we've, we've put the CSDs in there as well. It gives, it does give one, there are 12 CSDs. If they sign on to it, it gives them one voting member to represent all the CSDs. And then every jurisdiction has one voting member as well. And then the IWMA did announce on June 3rd that they had hired a new executive director. And I think he started today, he did start today. And so with that, all the other member agencies have approved the JPA outside of us and Moro Bay who were reviewing it tonight. If I had had time, I would have checked to see if theirs went through, apologies. But so that's where we're at. If one agency doesn't approve, then the JPA cannot move forward. So with that, staff recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute the San Luis Obispo Integrated Waste Management Authority Second Amended and Restated Joint Powers Agreement.
Thank you, Laura. And I have not heard anything through the countywide mayor's meetings that anyone is planning on voting against. So assuming it's going forward. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, Councilmember Funk.
I just asked Councilmember Borbo if he's happy with this thing, since he's had to carry this all the way along.
Yes, he is.
Yes, since I chaired the committee to, you know, kind of rewrite it. And we got input from city managers, city attorneys, et cetera. I mean, there were a few compromises and I think it's, I think it's good. I would want to clarify one thing. The seven cities are the members of the JPA. The community services districts are participating agencies. So the critical thing is that all seven cities adopt the joint, revised joint power agreement. And then essentially it goes into effect as soon as the seventh city adopts it.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open up to public comment on this item. Any members of the public wishing to speak? If you're on the webinar, raise your hand on the phone, star nine. Do we have any callers, Luke? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back for a motion.
I'll move approval.
Also, a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Potemnusam. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dara's?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Potemnusam?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
All right, now we will move quickly through our council announcements and committee reports. We'll start with Councilmember Borbo.
Yes, as noted, the IWMA JPA amendment is routing its way through the cities and our new executive director started today. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dara's.
I don't have, I don't have much to report, other than there were, were two meetings last week. APCD met and CAPSL met, and I had previous commitments at those times. So I didn't, wasn't able to attend either one of those, unfortunately. That's all I have.
Okay. Mayor Potemnusam.
Nothing to report at this time.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes, the Atascadero Basin Groundwater Sustainable Millody Agency has its next scheduled meeting on July 6th in the afternoon. The Design Review Committee will not be meeting this Thursday. And the Homeless Services Oversight Council will be meeting on July 20th to review all the comments that are coming in on the proposed countywide strategic plan to address homelessness. So we are soliciting comments on that plan, which is available on the website of the Homeless Services Oversight Council, HSOC. So if you, rather than giving some long link, just Google HSOC San Luis Obispo, and it will take you right to a link that can allow you to read the plan and make a promise. We encourage folks to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for me, Slocog and RTA will be dark in July. And countywide mayor's meeting that we had did learn that the animal shelter, the controversial animal shelter, at least controversial in here in North County, should be opening sometime this summer. So, and, and potentially somewhat under budget. So anyway, we'll get that further information. And Dave Mullinax from League of California Cities did let us know that the potential ballot measure being put on by that, the, the, it's, it's a, it's a number of developers that are wanting to put that ballot measure on the November ballot. They didn't make it, but it would be the one that would require every single fee, you know, tax, any sort of increase that the city would do, including 218 votes that it would have to go to a ballot, which of course would grind everything to a halt. So they haven't qualified for November, but they still have until early August to qualify for 2024, which would have a look back provision to January 1 of 2022. So it's, it's still, still out there and, and something that would be quite detrimental. And I'm sure lawsuits will ensue if it passes. Finally, I just want to let folks know regarding Galaxy Theater. The Galaxy Theater phone number, if you do have gift cards you're concerned about, can you use those? Will they honor those? The phone number that you can call is eight, 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 four, zero, seven, nine, eight, seven, four. And let me give that to you one more time. It is eight, 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 four, zero, seven, nine, eight, seven, four. Please reach out to them directly. Are there any individual determinations or actions? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.